Talking so much, I'd lost track of time here. Alrighty, so it is two minutes after six and we are opening this session of the yeah, the June session of the city council Carlton city council meeting. Do you call the roll, please?
Councillor David Samuelville.
Here.
President. Councillor Grant Erickson.
Here.
Councillor here.
Here.
Here. Council President Kevin Skipper.
Here.
Mayor Linda Watkins.
Here.
Members.
Okay, please join with me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Under God, indivisible, the great and honest.
Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Alrighty, are there any ceremonies, appointments, or announcements? Hey. In that case, we'll move down to item six, which are citizen comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any items off or on the agenda. When invited by the mayor, members of the public shall come forward, state their name and street address, and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. And we start with item A, which is items that are not on tonight's agenda. Do we have any guests?
Looks like no hands raised, so you can.
Okay. I was waiting for you should get a cue there.
You're good.
Alrighty, so, which takes us to item B, which are items that are on the agenda. Do we have any queries? I would say no. Okay, that moves us along to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Which takes us to ordinances, resolutions, discussions, and action items. We start with our two guests this evening from ecology. This is the ecology rate review. Our guest is Dan Blue and.
Ernie Martin.
Ernie Martin.
You guys. Mayor Watkins, members of the council, thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Ernie Martin. I'm the operation manager for Recology Western Oregon out of McMinville. And I'm over the calling operations that serves the community and city of Carlton. And then next to me is.
Yeah, I'm Dan Blue, government relations and community engagement manager for Recology Northern Oregon. And Ernie is going to do most of the talking today. Your questions and moral support.
Dan, earlier today that I get nervous, I thought you could do this one. Anyway, so I'll be talking from some talking points that interrupt me if you wish. Get going here. One thing that we like to remind our municipalities is that we are 100% employee owned company. The largest for the only in state of Oregon and the largest waste on recycling company in the country. Employee. Let's see here, this email will provide a brief update on our Carlton collection operations and sharing update on the rate projections as well as our request for a 5.75% rate increase for the coming year. You should have your rate documentation and those rates for the council. Collections of deeds, collection operation in Carlton remained unchanged from last year. But we do have some announce announcements regarding staffing levels in our McMinville based operation. But first, I want to recognize the drivers who serve Carlton and other areas around here in Amel County. Residential garbage driver, Andy Camel, 46 years. Your residential recycle driver, Rob Porter, 22 years. Residential yard debris service or yard debris driver, Matt Newby, 41 years. Commercial glass driver, Rachel Brown, one year. Residential glass driver, Farrah Wellen, 2.25 years. Sorry, commercial garbage cardboard driver, Todd Nia, six years. Commercial garbage driver, Maggie Towers, two years. So combined, it's about 121 years of experience with Recology Western Oregon's your city.
And one of those folks lives in town here, at least one of them.
Go now. We're not sure which one.
You know?
Can't think of the name right now, but yeah, we've had several conversations.
Don, I think Don Matini.
Yeah.
Yeah.
DJ is what we always.
Oh, really?
I raised with. I'll wait to address him tomorrow's DJ. All right, we have just over approximately 1,050 customers signed up for service in Carlton. And the most common customer has a 90 gallon weekly garbage with every other week recycling. Some subscription services for yard debris. This is a new program that we started, Yard Bre and Glass. I think we're probably about 60 from from last year on yard debris. We're up to 236 customers. And glass, we're up by about 25 and we're up to 88 customers. It's description glass. We're using all our 99 renewable diesel for our collection operations. Commitment to our 99 is voluntary. Helps drive demand for the renewable fuel source. It's much cleaner in terms of admissions and particular matter. And some of you may know that we suffered a cyber incident in October that really impacted our access to our account route customer service call center and financial data systems. We are still recovering from that incident, but I'm happy to report that all our systems are back online. Day to day collection services continued throughout the impact period, especially to our drivers and our customer service reps. We kept everything moving on the ground.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
I just want to say our drivers had no access to route information. Our customer service folks had no access to account information. And they worked really hard picking up everybody's cams on time and making sure that services weren't impacted at all. So you didn't really notice it from the, you know, customer side. I know, I know for sure people have longer wait times on the phone as the CSRs are trying to help them. Our wait times have, maybe you talk about this, I'm stealing your thunder, but our wait times have come down. We're still working on that, but I just being new to the company, I just was really impressed with, you know, people just doing routes by memory. And I know customers got extra services that benefited them without having to pay for it because we were just picking up everything we saw so that we didn't make any mistakes, right? So I'm sorry.
So our, our office manager, we actually hired her in November, right after the systems were shut down by corporate. And, and the systems weren't back up running fully until January or February. So, so we have an office manager that didn't unfortunately get the proper training that she deserved because of our systems being down along with some new CSRs. So it has been a struggle getting them back up to speed, but I believe that we're getting there now. Alrighty, we have fully staffed McMinville customer call center and while wait times are decreasing, we still feel there is room for improvement. Recology supports the following events through sponsorships or in kind donations of service. Here are some examples of events we have supported. Yamhill County House Cold Asylum Waste Cleanup. This is a great program to get homes less toxic by getting those chemicals out of garages and basements, which we know is appreciated by fire departments in the county. We support the Oregon International Air Show at McMinville with services and volunteers for our company. Carlton Walk in the Park Golf Tournament. We started that last year, I believe, and we're going to do it again this year. Carlton Fun Days Parade. And I personally was involved a couple of years, two, three years, years ago. I'm not sure when, but it wasn't that long ago. That was so much fun. We're hoping to do that again. This year we have a sign up sheet and we do have some interest from some of our employees. And then the Carlton City Cleanup. This year we haul 7.95 tons of bulky waste, 5.49 tons of metal, 2.2 tons of yard debris, and 0.32 tons of mixed recycling. And all that was 31,520 pounds of unwanted material removed from the city of Carlton. Good job. We are looking, we are looking to fill our Waste Zero Specialist Division to reinvigorate our upstream waste reduction efforts by working with businesses, schools, organizations. Now onto the rate review process. As shown in our packet, we are proposing a 5.75% rate increase across all lines of service in our collections program or our franchise agreement. This is projected to bring us a bit below the operating margin target expressed in our franchise agreement of 12% when setting rates. Bringing us to a projected return on revenue of 10.04% for the coming year. Without a rate adjustment, we are projected to have a 5.74% return on revenue for the current full month period. We are asking for 5.75% adjustment this year to maintain pace with inflationary pressures we continue to see in the marketplace. We are seeking a lower than allowable rate adjustment, recognizing that rate increase can be a burden on some customers. We want to mitigate that, let's still be in the allowable range. Some of the cost drivers justify rate increase, but the Western Region CPI was up 3.6% from March 2023 to March 2024. When we completed the rate review, we anticipate a similar increase through the next 12 months. Labor costs are up at the valley due to filling remaining vacancies and employee retention. Currently, we are fully staffed. Disposal costs are up driving this. So when we pick up the garbage here, we, we used to take it to the landfill. They closed down the river bin. So now we take it to our transfer station. So they're reloaded and then take it to off your landfill on for balance. So the landfill rate increase increases in increased cost of the transfer station. Top of view, landfill disposal rate is up 7.59% from 3950 to 4250 a ton. Additionally, the transfer station will increase their rate to all companies 4.99% from 6781 to 7120 a ton effective July 1. Other operational expense cards, containers, parts, components are all up over 3 this year with some items still hard to get. We need do this supply chain issues. For example, we ordered a truck. When we order a garbage truck, it usually take, used to take about nine months. We ordered a truck. It was, it took almost three years to receive it. I think we received it about five months ago. So I hear that the wait time is a little bit shorter than three years now, so it's getting better, but it's, there are some issues there. Some of that's left over from COVID period.
Yeah.
It's still just dragging down the industry. Super frustrating for us. Good news to offset some of the other pressures is recycling market has turned around. Over the last, what, 10 years?
Yeah.
The recycling market crashed from a point where we couldn't get rid of the recycling to a point it was well over the expense to, to have the recycled process that it was to actually get rid of the garbage. And so we're seeing that turn around where it's actually starting to come into the positive again. Although the price of fuel has been volatile, up over $4 a gallon. It has recently dropped down to the 3.25 range, so hopefully that continues to drop or stays new. Given those costs increase and in order to maintain an operating margin expressed in the franchise agreement, we are seeking a 5.75% rate increase service, service rates in the city of Carlton. For example, with the rate adjustment, 32 gallon weekly garbage customer with recycling will see a $1.17 per month rate increase. Bringing their rate up from 2034 a month to 2151. A 90 gallon weekly garbage customer with every other week recycling, the most common customer in Carlton would go up $1.95 per month from 3385 to 3580. Closing, thank you for letting us serve the city of Carlton. And if you have any questions, we're going to try to answer. Brought us.
Glass recycle, but I couldn't find it.
What's that?
Glass recycle, I couldn't find it on here with the increases.
Yeah, so the glass recycle subscriptions, we have 88 customers right now.
No, what's the increase?
The rating increase. Rating.
Is glass spelt out?
I couldn't find it.
Let me look for a sec. Because glass is a subscription service, right?
Yeah.
Well, that's a great question. David Rannell. Medical. Do you know what our glass rate is?
Well, you know what? Let's not take the time right now. We can, I'll find out later.
Yeah, we'll have to get back to you on that one. We shouldn't. It should be in here because we shouldn't be raising rates on anything that you don't have in front of you. I can say that 5.75 applies to all the rates. But I definitely get back to you. That's surprised. I'm sorry. No one has ever asked me that before, so yeah, we'll get back to you. Bye, councillor apologies, but.
Any other?
No, just a statement, if I can.
Yes, sir.
I really appreciate your attention to the fact that a lot of customers are dealing with economic struggles because everything is up from every utility, every, everything is just up. You guys see that at your own work. So I appreciate your attention to, let's not go overboard on rate hikes. And let's keep it reasonable. I appreciate that. That's a good tip. So, thank you.
I have a question. When was the last increase? How much was that?
It was last year and I'm feeling like it was around 5%. We're definitely coming in a little bit higher than last year and I, listening to the talking points, they're pretty similar to what we said last year and that's frustrating for us. And I appreciate you acknowledging that everything is up in the economy and we'd rather be in a position where we don't have to come, you know, asking for more each year, but like the city and everybody else, we're, we're in the same economy and we also want to make sure we pay our employees well, so we can keep people for 40 years like we have. So I think it was around, Shannon, do you recall up out of your head? I think it was between 4 and 5%.
My other question is, it seems like you're projecting yard debris to go down in 2024, 2025. And the, the increase on the other services, they almost make up the difference. I was just wondering what's the reasoning there, why the?
Yeah, are you looking at yard debris and other wood and other?
Yeah, so collection services, debris box. In the city of Carlton, you have a decrease of 14,000 there. So it's 2023 has 69,000 actual, then projected for 2024, 2025, you have 54,000. So that's a decrease of 14,000 there. I was just wondering what's the reasoning? Are you expecting last service there?
Is it over here? Look, I'm trying to find where you are. Are you looking at the rate, the valley cost of service report?
Yeah, yeah.
And.
And so if you look at the last column.
Yep.
The third row.
Co collection services?
Yeah.
Debris box, okay. So I see what you're saying. Why, why, do you know why we projected a decrease in debris box business? You're over here.
No. The good news is if that's not true, then a review next year, right? So it's decreased, it's good, right? The way we're seeing it.
Well, not necessarily. So you're saying you're going to get less revenue, right? So you're getting last 15,000. And that sort of makes up for the increase there. So I was just wondering why?
Yeah.
Because if you didn't have an increase, technically you, you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't need this rating, right? If you know what I mean, like if there's a 15,000 decrease didn't happen, you, you'll be fine technically.
So the proposed rating increase would add 25,197. That's the proposed rate adjustment. I, or row 12345. So that 14 would offset about half of what we're showing needing. So that makes sense and I unfortunately can't explain why we're showing a reduction in Dropbox. It's possible, has there been some recent construction that's done in the city? Because that's one of the things that we talked about for, for like delivery of Dropbox contractors. I know there was a housing development. I think that went in, is it mostly done? I'm wondering if we saw sort of a spike in Dropbox for supporting the contractors who do in the building and that, and we're showing that to be tipping down. So we all get in a room and we talk with our, our route supervisors. We talk about what's happening in the community that we're doing the rate adjustment for. And that would be one of the things where someone like Chris Bredeleve could have said, you know, hey, we're not seeing as much Dropbox going into Carlton as we were seeing during the construction of that. I don't remember that specific comment, but I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out why that would have gone down. And that's an example of what I've seen in other places. So we will get back to you councillor with an answer to that question as well as the glass rate question.
My, sorry, I have.
No, no, please, please helps us to be better prepared for these, these kinds of questions, so please.
So operational expenses, they look very similar compared to the calendar year 2023.
Yep.
So you have 26% of revenue and then projected you got about 24%, right? So I imagine operation expense, you can pretty much go like it's a direct cost to, to your, to your service.
Yes.
My question is about the administrative expenses. Those are more overhead, right? So how, how are you allocating those services to Carlton?
That's a great question. So Recology Western Oregon, we split our businesses between the communities we serve here in the valley and those that we serve at the coast. And so when we sit down to conduct the annual rate review, we look at labor hours on the trucks that specifically serve Carlton versus Yamhill versus McMinville. Amity, Sheridan, Willamette. And some of the routes will serve multiple communities. But we have a calculation that's been built over many years to break out those labor costs, those fuel costs. What else? Maintenance costs. The cost of the customer service reps who support valley operations. And that allocation model essentially has different percentages for each of the cities that we serve based on actual truck hours, time spent providing the services here. And so the drivers, we can say, you know, 40% of the time we're in Yamhill, 25% in Carlton, and then they hit, you know, part of McMinville on their way back. We would overlay customer service hours who are not on a truck, but we would overlay their costs in the same fashion that we use the allocation for the driver hours, because that's really where the services customer pays for are at that interaction. Do that answer that?
Okay, so the administrative expenses, does that include all the expenses that you have? The company or just certain expenses, just like, like the customer service and things like that? Like I said, all encompassing, like everything or?
That's, yeah, that's a great question. I think it is everything rolled up as a percentage. So we do, I mean, some of our costs are to our corporate IT who allow us to have a website that your customers can access. Some of our costs go for corporate HR assistants. So we have administrative overhead rate that corporate charges out to all the what, 26 collection companies and that make up Recology. But how those, that, that administrative cost is distributed is through that same allocation. So, so I think some of the franchise agreements have certain cap on how much we can are then allowed to charge to the communities that we serve. I, off the top of my head, don't know if the franchise agreement is specific about that for Carlton, but we can look into that. And I'm happy to send that to you because it's a great question, like how we do the admin over.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry to be neat peeking, but it seems, since the contract is based on a ratio, it's like it's a 12%, right? Like you're.
Yeah, the franchise agreement allows us, so there's a range. To 1814, it's two percentage points on each one. So there's a range that, that if our projections show us to be outside that range, when we set rates, we are allowed through the franchise to set it to a 12% return on revenue. Some places it's 10%, some places don't have that target. They just want you to stay in the range. This franchise agreement says that when we set rates, we set 12. We're not asking for that. We're, you know, per the, the statement about everybody's challenge right now in this economy, we're asking to get us to 10 so that we can sort of maintain that staying somewhere in that range. The franchise agreement would permit us to come to you and say, well, we want to be a seven and a half percent rate, rate adjustment so that we can project to 12%. But we're opting to try to just, you know, stay in the game here and you know, try to protect the customers a little bit from, because I know I personally experienced everything. It's super expensive. I have, you know, three kids too many pets, like, you know, it's like, it's expensive to live in this.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. My, my final question would be, so if the, the actual is higher than 14%, let's say, would you adjust it down?
We would. We would, yes, yeah, we would either not ask for a rate increase. We would see where the projection gets us without any new revenue. And if the projection without any new revenue gets us higher than we should be, then absolutely we would show that rate review report to you and it would be your choice to say, well, let's, let's knock the rates down by 5% or 1% absolutely. So I, just a little background, I, I was the solid waste administrator for the city aggression for eight years. And so I was, you know, the staff person sitting at the other, other side of the table from the, from five garbage haulers. And so, and I did present a package. And the haulers met with me monthly and they knew, and I did present a package where rates were adjusted down one year. It was largely because there was a, it was a really good recycling revenue year coming off of a very bad recycling revenue year where we had raised rates 10%. And then recycling revenues came pouring into the system and I was like, hey, hauler, you guys have to take a haircut because you guys, you know, you just got a 10% rate increase and now you're making a whole bunch of money off recycling. You're at 15, 16% and the mayor was upset. Legitimately so. And we went for counsel and the haulers knew what I was doing and we got a rate reduction for the haulers. So that's the way it's supposed to work.
So do, do we, because I feel like we usually see this report when you're, when Recology is asking for an increase, right? Can we get this report like not when you're asking for an increase, like an annual report?
That's, I mean, it. The way I think the franchise works is if our projection shows us to be close to the CPI, we wouldn't even have to give you this. We would just come and say, hey, we need a CPI rate adjustment. And I mean, while council has the choice to do anything you want, the way the contract is written, it's kind of like, you just have, just give us that rate increase because that's what the franchise agreement says. The contract says it's going to be a CPI adjustment. Here's your 4%. It's captive for. We have, at least as far as I know, I've only been with the company for one year, but we always give the full rate review whether we're asking for a CPI adjustment or not. And so we're trying as a company to be a little more transparent. It's part of our employee owner value structure to be transparent about this because, you know, we believe we're in this for the long term with you all. And when our franchise comes up, we want to still be at the table here. And so we, we give this information and the other haulers, I don't know if you've ever seen them. They don't give you all this information. It's like, it's much more succinct. And so we do this out of desire to be more transparent and yeah. And so we do this out of desire to be more transparent and yeah, we'll give this to you with and we'd say, look, we're in the range, you don't have to do anything this year. Correct, so you can hold me to that, I've only been with the company for one year, but I I, you know, I took this job, I was like. I'm not interested in cooking books in any way, shape or form, I want to be fully transparent in my background, working for the government, I I believe. So I and I recall to you has always done the right thing from my perspective as a former regulator of garbage. It's the only company that I would have agreed to.
Thank you.
There was a lot of me talking, sorry, you know?
Glad you're here.
Any other questions? Okay. Where are we in this? Do we need?
The council would consider the moving to authorize for colleges request for rate adjustment effective July first twenty.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I motioned, it is moved that the city council approve and authorize the mayor to sign resolution number twenty twenty four. Three fifty, yep. Did I, did I mess up?
I think you've got a different cover sheet, I apologize.
Oh.
Um, the motion is um. Need to authorize apologies request for a rate adjustment effective July first.
What she said.
What she said.
Do we have a second?
Can I second that? I move to uh. That city council approve the rate adjustment for this July, right?
Effective July one twenty twenty four.
Effective July one twenty twenty four. Uh, that re-recology has asked for.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you so much, yeah.
Shannon, I think you may have received information about the cycling modernization act and. You have a survey that will need to be filled out by June twenty eighth in order to receive funding from the RMA from the state. I uh would love to work with you to help you fill that out, so it's a hundred questions. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll reach out to you.
Good night.
Totally on the wrong page.
And I know we're all getting used to the iPads and the electronic packets, so we're Amy and I are looking for ways to make it.
You just told me I'm getting used to it, so I'm getting used to it.
Okay, I have a question, Jenna, when is the current agreement of a renewal?
I would have to look into that twenty twenty five, oh. Or I can just ask Amy.
Okay, moving on to item B, which is resolution twenty twenty four three fifty eight, water management and conservation plan with a. commentary from our. City engineer.
Have a PowerPoint. If we can load it up.
Right, I'll just signal when when to go, so anyway, that that's what we're talking about, uh so. The water management conservation plan or WMCP is a requirement. By the state, it's something the city asked to do. And it that gives you the OAR that calls for it, the chapter and the division. And that lays out the elements of the plan and it's it's very proscriptive, meaning. You have to address all of these. And you don't add or subtract anything, so I'm gonna just briefly go through. What is involved in each of those elements and then I'll dive into what has changed. So next. So the supplier plan, really that's just introduction, organization. Other affected agencies and schedule, so other affected agencies means what other. Government agencies are affected by what we do in Carlton, and that's really only two. Yamhill County, because our water sources in Yamhill County. And McMinville Water and Light. Uh, because we have a inner tie with them. And of say slash the Yamhill Regional Water Authority, so. That's what that is, next. So description, essentially that's just going through and talking about what your system is. You have officially two water sources, Panther Creek and Fall Creek, although. Uh, you only actually have facilities on Panther Creek. Yeah, water rights on both, but there's no facilities on Fall Creek. Uh, so you don't have any means of getting at those water rights. And we don't even know if we could get any water there, there's, we don't know how much water flows.
Where is Fall Creek?
It's up in the hills.
Well, I.
But I I don't know exactly, it's on the way to.
All the way to, okay.
Yeah. Uh, interconnections, McMinville Water and Light, Valley View and East Carlton, Valley View and East Carlton are essentially. Uh, little water districts that are on right on the edge of Carlton and we provide them water. McMinville Water and Light, um, we have an emergency interconnection with them. We talk about ITAs, um, so in intergovernmental agreements. Right now, we don't actually have one with McMinville Water and Light, that's in process. Uh, service area and population, water use, there's a bit of effort that goes into that. And we uh show how much raw water we use, how much water we actually sell. How much water it takes to produce water, cause you have raw water. And you gotta use some of the treated water to go back and. And make treated water, so you lose some of the raw water there. And then there's uh just water loss that we go through. So then we. Uh, define all the water rights. And there's a system description, so what's part of your system? Got an intake, you had a treatment plant, you got a uh two reservoirs and a bunch of pipe, essentially is what that says. Next. The conservation plan. Or that element, these are the mandatory uh parts of that. Element, you have to address each one of these. Per the OAR and the city does. Um, so we're covering all of those, that's in your plan now. I don't want to go over each one of them, but. Just to let you know, those are the elements that we do. Next. This is the one that usually uh most people are interested in. So the curtailment plan is essentially. What happens when our water sources low and we don't have enough water? So we go through uh the history, has that happened in our past? And the answer is yes, uh the most recent uh two years in a row, two thousand sixteen and seventeen. If you were here in sixteen, know that the city at one point had about fifteen days worth of water left. And we got saved by an early rain, early heavy rain in September. So we go through that history. Triggers are essentially. Uh, what are the. Uh, elements that tell us we're in curtailment? And there's five stages of curtailment, one is minor and then all the way down to emergency. And that's laid out what all the triggers are for all those stages. Then implementation is essentially what do you do? When you're in those particular stages, what are the steps that the city is going to take? And these aren't, gosh, we think about these steps, these are steps that you you have to take as a city plan. Next. Water supply, that's really looking at twenty years down the road. Uh, and you do a twenty year population projection. Which is based on the PSU population data, so it's not, it's not something that we get to play with. We don't get to say, I think we're gonna grow at one percent or no, I think it's gonna be three percent. We go to PSU, take that data, use whatever that is, because that's what the agencies that review this will accept. And so if you use that data, says in twenty years, that's what our population is going to be. We use that to forecast uh what our maximum rate falling is going to be and then look at. Do we have enough water? Do we have enough water rights? Do we have enough water supply? And look at what are alternative sources, so that's all addressed in the plan. Next. Okay, so this is an update, the original plan was approved January sixth twenty fifteen. And per that plan and a requirement of the state is. At five years, you you do a review and at ten years, you actually do an update. And that's where we are right now, we have to do an update due to the state on July sixteen. Till next month. So the changes in the plan. Obviously, the population projection was updated. Based on the PSU data. And we looked at current projected water demand. Uh, the average day demand, that's what ADD is, that's average over the entire year. Uh, for the last ten years is three hundred and eighty thousand gallons per day. Now, if you go into the plan and look at the data, you will see that two years ago. Our average daily demand really went down. About ten years ago, that's what it was, and then it went up up to about four hundred sixty. And then after the transmission line project. It dropped and the data says that we're saving on average a hundred and ten thousand gallons per day. Because of the water loss that we got rid of through that project. And I want to show you the numbers, because you know, if I just say we save a hundred thousand gallons a day. You could say, so what, is that a lot or not? But you can see it's about a quarter of what we had been using. It's a lot of water, say.
It's the last like two percent power.
Uh, our water losses, uh the data shows we're still at twenty percent, we were at forty. We cut it in half. Because of that project.
Can we cut this out to twenty four cents?
It's, it's hard to get down to ten percent. Uh, so a lot of that is. Uh, leaks in old pipes, so it takes money to. You know, fix that. Uh, part of that is leak detection every year, uh and the city does that, and when we find leaks. We go out and fix it, but there's a lot of leaks that we don't know about. Uh, some of that is actually uh unmetered water. Um, so it's not particularly water loss, it's just that it's unmetered. So for instance, if we do fire hydrant tests. You go and you see they they wanna see how much flow is coming out, so they open it up. That doesn't get metered, all of that water going out, it's just. Shows up as water loss. Um, there's, I think there are some elements at the water treatment plant. That aren't metered, that are water used to make water. So that some of that is not actual loss, some of it is just operations. That you have to do that at this point is not metered. I would venture to say that your actual loss is probably closer to fifteen percent. But I have any data to back that up.
What is the biggest um unmetered activity? I was just looking at. Construction activities is unmetered, that seems concerning, the construction can just use.
Sometimes it's unmetered, sometimes it's metered. Um, if it's small, uh I I think sometimes we don't meter it, if it's larger, we do put a meter on it now. So we can track that.
Would that be the highest meter water usage? Uh, you can think of like construction or.
Unmetered?
Yeah, unmetered.
Uh, well, you know, if you have to do a uh fire hydrant test or. What's called a uh blow off. So at the end of dead end lines. Uh, so line goes down the street and it doesn't loop around, it just stops. It's called the dead end line and there's a blow off there. And. Every once in a while, at least once a year, you gotta go and blow that off, because water at the end gets stagnant. Doesn't get used, just sits there and the water quality goes bad, it bad enough that it can cause problems. So all of your dead end lines in the entire community need to be. Purged yearly. And you probably lose quite a bit of water. Through that. There's a lot of dead end line, I can't tell you exactly how many dead end lines, I'd have to go and look, but you have dead end lines. And staff has to go and blow those off. Every year. Uh, there may be some of them that they have to pull off more. I'd have to talk to Brian and see, see what that is, but so there are elements that just aren't metered. So we updated the system description, essentially that is, we've had developments. That put in water line. And so in our chart, we put in, hey, we got more water line, we got more eight inch water line, it's and it's PVC, so that's. That's all that is, is we're just updating that description.
Back to the, back to the. Dead end lines, the city was built and that was just how it is, so are the new. Developments that are going in, are they making it where they're more loop lines, so we don't have that problem?
We require looping as much as we can, but. There are places in developments where they come up to the end of the development, the street stops there, somebody else is gonna. Build next to them, so you gotta dead end the line right there. And if it's a short line, we'll just. It dead ends, next development picks it up and loops it somewhere. There has been one or two times where we've had really, really long dead end lines. Where there was an easy way to do a temporary loop. We did that, we did that in JR two. Uh, they have two dead end lines that are heading east. Actually dead end right up to the UGB, but they're never gonna get looped. We made them put a connection. Between them so that they are looped, so that. Because they never will be in in the future as the city expands. So yes, we tried to address those.
And then a new developer go in, do they look at the old developments and then?
Yep.
Figure out how they can.
Yeah, and we tell them where they gotta loop. Yeah, as much, as much as we can, we can't make them do tons of offsite where. Occasionally we can. Uh, we did in JR three, cause it's such a large development, said now you. Uh we did in JR three, because it's such a large development, said now you gotta have. Two connections to the water system. So as part of that development, they're doing a block of offsite water line to loop it in. So it depending on the development. Um we did update the triggers. So. The one thing that was not in the triggers originally. Probably should have been, but it was the first time the triggers had been put together and they did best they could. And then we went through ten years and said, you know, we really ought to add this trigger, and that is the level of the raw water. If that really is what tells us, are we in trouble or not? So we added that trigger. And then we have a recommendation, it's not. In the plan as a requirement, it's a recommendation, you don't have to make a decision on it tonight. But it's something that we think the city ought to think about, and that is during the summer, do doing even odd day irrigation. So that essentially is if your address ends in an even number. You can irrigate irrigate on even days. Ends in an odd number, odd days, so you're going every other day. That will bring down the peak demand. Um maybe not as much as you would think, but it does bring it down, does save a little bit of water. It also gets. Uh people in the city thinking about conservation. And I I think that's a great step. Uh it's a prudent step, um step that other communities have done for quite some time. I remember when I lived in Hager. Uh about twenty five years ago, we just did it. It was just standard, you just did it. So anyway, that is a recommendation. That the city can think about, discuss and decide whether you want to do. And that would be, you know, it'd be something like, okay, starting June one, we do even odd and we go through September. That type of thing. And some people do it and some people won't, but it's a good step and it gets people thinking and it. It's not part of the curtailment, it's just standard prudent water conservation. So again, you don't have to make that decision tonight. Next. So other agencies, so there is a requirement that you send out a draft. To the other agencies and with a thirty day notice and they can comment. So that draft was sent out. Um then well, Water and Light slash Yamhill Regional Water Authority responded May thirtieth. They had a request that Carlton used their curtailment plan if an IGA is signed. And I chatted with them and said. How about we, we simply say that? If we have an IGA, the curtailment plans will be addressed within that. So we're not agreeing to use theirs right now, we're agreeing to address it whenever there's an IGA. They said, fine. Okay, so uh that one's easy, uh Yamhill County, they have till June twenty first. Uh we may not hear from them, because they don't really deal with water, so they don't really. Have a dog in the fight, so to speak. Uh City of Carlton Planning, that Scott, uh no comment. So uh those are the agencies, next. So the steps. What we would ask is the city accepts the updated plan. With the caveat that we will add the other agency responses to the appendix when we receive them. And then submit the plan to the state before July sixteen. And. Uh just to reiterate, really the only change besides updating populations and demands is that we added. That one trigger, which is the water level and the raw water reservoir. That's really the only substantive change to the plan.
Where is that trigger market idea? I I don't imagine that we have a dipstick in there and.
No, it's, so there are. If, I don't know if you've ever been up there, but we have a dam, we have an overflow and then there's. Wooden weers that we put in that raises the level. So the first. Level is the water stops going over the wood.
Okay.
That's easy just to figure out, and it's tied to a a date. The next one is, at some point, we're taking out the wood. And so the next one is, the water stops going over the concrete where.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and then it's a measurement down from the concrete where. We're two feet down, we're four feet down, we're more than four feet down. So that's, it's easy to measure from the top.
Any other questions?
Uh I have a question, check, on page fifty one. We have table two point two dash five water losses.
Yeah.
My question is the produced water. Like started from two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen was one twenty seven, one thirty nine, then one forty, now we are at one twelve. I was just wondering why the produced water has decreased over the years. Is it just the weather or like?
Wait, which which table are you on?
Um table two dash five.
Two five.
Water losses, two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty three.
Eight sixteen.
Ah, here we go. So produce, produce water. Which, which column are you asking about?
The, the second column, I guess.
Produced water?
Reduced water.
Produced water, why did it go down?
Yeah.
Okay, so produced water is the water that's coming out of the treatment plant. So we have a a a meter up at the treatment plant. And then you got seven miles of transmission line. That used to leak like a sieve. And so that is showing you. What happened after we did that project?
So you had to produce more and you got the.
We. So now we don't have to produce as much, because we're not losing that water. So that, you know, that is just a stunning. Uh data showing the impact of that project.
Counselor Skipper?
Yeah, thank you, um I've got a couple of questions, so bear with me. Um I guess my first question is. We had ten years to kind of update this, is it typical that we wait a month before? It's due to the state to kind of start going over this, it would, it's kind of a lot to take in, so I was just kind of curious if. Maybe we can start that process a little sooner next time.
Uh yeah, there's, actually, we did a uh five year review. That would, is mandated, and then actually earlier this year. Uh the state sent out a reminder and said, hey. Uh remember, you gotta do this update, and so we started working on it then. Uh and. It would have been nice to have got this done a month earlier. I agree with you.
Yeah. Um if you bear with me, I'm just gonna kind of go through some pages um. And some questions on there, so on page forty, it, you know, we have the two um entities that we provide water to. And one of them's the East Carlton Water, and it says we do not have a signed agreement with East Carlton Water District, I was just curious. Why we don't and what what what's going on with that?
Yeah, I don't know why we don't. Um there was an agreement written up that never got signed. By either side, and I think it just got set aside. And never got revisited. So it's, it's probably something that's worth looking into, maybe. Uh I don't know if there was personnel changes on their side, you know, it's a small district and. They might be uh have some challenges that way.
Where is this district at?
It's just across the bridge.
And in each.
Yeah. Pretty small, so I.
More in farmland than produced.
Yeah.
You're providing water to.
Well, it it it's urban development, if you go look at over there, what's outside the cities, it just looks like it's part of the city, actually. So it's not farmers.
Is that down Medoffrey Road?
I think it's mostly on uh. East Main.
Okay.
Over the first bridge by that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you go, you go across Hon Creek.
A few, yeah.
Counselor Skipper?
Yeah, sorry, um and then, so you touched on the leak detection and you mentioned, Gordon, that, you know, the city does it every year. I'm assuming that's probably just public work staff actively looking for leaks, but it does look like the last official leak detection survey we did was. Almost ten years ago in two thousand thirteen.
Yeah.
So is that another thing that we should probably put on the the list to revisit at some point in time, I know the transmission main. Replacement was a huge fix, absolutely cut it in half, but we're still at twenty percent loss, you know, which is high above the state average. Um so I I would like to kind of see what what that entails as far as. Um trying to get another leak detection survey done.
Yeah, that's, that's always a good step. I I know that the the city does address leaks as they find them. But, you know, actually, a leak detection survey is not very expensive. And so it's something that uh we could do, and I know Brian has. A company that he works with and knows well. So that's certainly something that could be done.
How often should you be doing those surveys, what is the recommendation?
I know of some communities that uh do it yearly, in fact, there's a couple of small communities that. Said, let's buy our own equipment. And they bought their own equipment, they do it. And they do it yearly. Part of that is budget and how much, you know, the bigger you are, the more expensive it gets, because you got more pipes. But. You could do it probably at the most yearly. But every three years would be a good thing to, if if you were gonna start setting a. A program. There, there's no formal recommendation of. When you should do it.
That's why it's been eleven years, I guess.
Well, you know, it it also. Tends sometimes to fall off the priority list when you have other big problems happening. Uh and, you know, the city had some big issues going on and big projects going on.
More questions?
Yeah, just a couple more, I promise, um the you mentioned that we don't need to decide tonight on the curtailment, the odd even. Standard, and I I I do appreciate that, because I feel like that's a little rushed. Um you know, just having a rate increase and then telling people they can only use their water three days a week is, it's tough to stomach. Um so.
It's just for irrigation.
I understand that, but.
Yeah, okay.
It's still water that our rate pairs pay for, so um. The other thing um. That I hope that this emphasizes to all my fellow council members is, is the ne- need to secure another source, I mean. We've been doing a lot of work, putting a lot of investment into it, and we feel like we're at a pretty good solid spot, but. Um I would love to see some, some serious. Development on, on both the, the emergency water agreement, whatever has you, but um. A secondary source or 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 a supplying source or some, of some, um some sort, because we're we're limited to the one source we have. Is is Panther Creek, so um. I think with these curtailments we're talking about, the the growth what that's happening, I hope this is a priority for all of us to to get done.
And that is something that um city manager has been working on for the last couple of years. Looking at different options and working with some of the other communities around that have water sources. So we've been, we've not been negligent completely on that, but it's. Some other things have kind of taken a little bit of priority lately, so.
And I have another appointment in July. With one of the organization.
So, yeah, so the, that's been, yeah, that's been on the. Docket for.
It's been slowly taken.
Yeah.
It hasn't been dropped, it's just slow.
Yeah, yeah, that's my thing right now, but yeah, you're right, I mean, it's, it's something that we are concerned about and it's, needs to be. Kept up there in the top of the line. Okay, so what do we need to do here, folks, do we? Go ahead, from what you're saying, do we want to go ahead and and look at this resolution tonight then, or is that?
Moving to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution except for water conservation. Slide workshop.
Oh, the caveat is that we would add the comments from the other agencies as they come in.
Right, so I moved that council approved and authorized the mayor to sign. Resolution number twenty twenty four dash three five eight, adopting the water conservation and management plan with the caveat of uh.
Comments.
Like comments from.
Other agents.
There. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
I I'd like to talk about the even odd as soon as possible, because I understand conservation is also as important as. That's getting another source uh. As things changes and population grows, conservation is going to become more important, so it's probably better to start now. That we don't necessarily need the later. We actually need it, so I'd like to talk about that soon.
Okay. If it's something council desires, we'll make it. Soon agenda.
Wait there, Gordon, you tell me. For what, where you're involved in all the different communities of the state? Where does the state stand on people, say, submerging a large tank in their front yard or rain barrels? Using collecting rainwater for irrigation?
I do that. At my house. Um I know there are some states that, I think it's Colorado. That say, that's our water, you can't do that, Oregon has not got.
Oregon, Oregon allows the rain barrels, nothing.
Oh, yeah.
Would that be something that could be in code through developments for large tanks and. Front yard, backyard, pump water out, irrigate.
Uh I don't know if that's a code thing, but it certainly, we can make it. More apparent that that's acceptable.
Improved practice?
Yeah, I guess so, I I probably got. A couple thousand gallons worth that I collect off my roof and I water my. My uh landscape with that every summer.
Moving right along here, um item C. We are at the agenda item that was. Continued from last month, which is, so it looks like we're doing its case file, LA twenty twenty four dash oh two. Regarding the development code. So. There's going to be a brief um, oral report from staff addressed to the council. This will be followed by council questions of staff. After the council questions of staff have been fully answered, we will reopen the hearing. And any person attending tonight will be invited to testify thereafter. We'll close the hearing, we'll debate. And we'll decide whether to approve the code amendments as proposed. And so we are now ready for the oral report from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, President Council on Scott White, uh, contract manager for the state. And I have a PowerPoint as part of the oral presentation there, we're gonna get that up on screen. And uh, go to the first slide there, uh, I find number two. So, I'd like to just uh, go over some background here. It was on May seventh. Uh, that the city council opened the public hearing and received public testimony. And they closed the hearing and delivered. Uh, there were three primary topics of the uh, of the hearing there, that the topics that generated questions. Council. And those topics are shown there, bullet point by the speaker, tree spacing. Uh, open space is part of new subdivisions. And the AH zone changes, the key changes that uh, were identified as part of the. Uh, next, those slide. Uh, just take uh, all, all three of these, just uh, to go over some background first. Uh, with respect to street tree spacing, it was uh. On a, a council work session, also with the, that advisory committee there, uh, March fifth. That the council discussed that, uh, yeah, we would like the draft code. Uh, to show uh, one tree per forty feet of street frontage. Uh, the uh, planning commission hearing, uh, first hearing of the government code update, so it's uh. April eighth and that meeting was uh, a decision of the planning commission. Uh, to recommend the council on a different ratio there of one per, one uh, tree. Per every uh, twenty five feet of street frontage. Uh, and everywhere where street spacing is specified in the code. Uh, then on uh, May seventh, there were some questions and clarifications. And we had kind of what, what's in summary there was a question of, uh, what is the potential for street tree spacing? If based on canopy spread. And so used by, by some other jurisdictions. And uh, what issues are present, uh, what uh, code changes are, are needed to, to do this? So we'll uh, go to the next slide and uh, gotta. So this was uh, one of the examples that we had uh, from uh, exhibit five. The May seventh agenda, we had the, uh, some cities, so. Just some uh, random examples, you know, one was the city of Hillsborough, they do use a uh, tree spacing. Uh, by, by spread. And uh, just below there is this example of what uh, their table looks like and. Uh, Carlton's table comparatively, the existing uh, street tree list also has um, a similar column. Uh, indicating the uh, the, the spread of, of the tree. Um. So that kind of ranges from twenty to forty feet for, for most trees. Um, next slide. We also had uh, the city of Portland uh, as uh, part of exhibit five and. Uh, they have an extensive list of, of uh, trees and have an exhibit. Uh, this exhibit here was kind of showing a building frontage and the spacing of trees generally uh, twenty five feet apart. Uh, but what this uh, slide showed was uh, the fact that uh. Portland acknowledges certain exceptions for various street infrastructure out there, what would be uh, street lights and. Hydrants and signs and things like that, so that, that's all part of their, their automated standards. Next slide. Uh, this is uh, Gordon's comments uh, in response to kind of what we have uh, with respect to uh. Uh, changes on the topic of street spacing, uh. Uh, I can go through all these bullets here, but uh, yeah, basically a lot of the things that uh, the Portland, city of Portland slideshow there. There is some distance needs uh, from various uh, street infrastructure. Uh, some of this is uh, with respect to various other codes that, that are out there, some are best practice. Uh, types of things, some are, are from studies that are, that are out there, so uh. But that's uh, the uh, Gordon's uh, comments in response to uh, the need to observe. Uh, certain things in concert with uh, the spacing of street trees. Well, next slide. Uh, these are my uh, additional comments here. Sometimes it's the lot size too, that we. Have a, a townhouse lots, lots can be uh. Kind of um, then as far as uh, uh. Maybe difficult to accommodate uh, street trees. Also franchise utility uh, companies, so gas and electric and others uh, have uh. Have their easements that are beyond the, the right of way there, uh. That often um, is the reason why street trees are the last item that is put. Into uh, into the subdivision. Uh. Does be knocked down otherwise, or the uh, root zones damaged through the cuts and that sort of thing. Uh, and a lot of the best practice items that uh, are done in the field is done, aren't followed, maybe there's not uh. Um, maybe not people um, watching or something like that, but. But anyways, I just wanted to add some of the observations about the practicality of, of, of planting stream, uh, street trees. Uh, next slide. So, part of the staff report that you have this evening, we are proposing some alternatives. Uh, to consider, uh, should the, the council tonight uh, decide to approve. One alternative related to street tree spacing. Is uh, utilizing a, a range, uh, not being specific to. Twenty five or forty, but acknowledging that uh, trees do range in size and uh. The highlighted text in gray is our suggestion for added text. That would acknowledge the uh, the range of uh. Mature canopy spread between uh, twenty five and, and forty. Uh, we have a graphic there that sort of illustrates uh, that uh, the spacing distance. So along with some other things that Gordon mentioned with his comments, the need for observing uh. All street lights and uh, sight distance, a visual clearance at, at intersections and things like that. Um, the uh, city's uh, existing, as I mentioned, the existing street tree list. Uh, it has a, a column or row for um. Uh, or a tree spread that is on site, and then also there's a proposed list. That I believe that's coming forward and, and maybe a month or two. And that uh, proposed list also has um. Uh, requirements for uh. For, for the type of tree, not only the by tree spread is, is shown for each of the trees that are shown to the list, but also uh. The um, corresponding need for planter width. Uh, so that's kind of what's uh, shown in the orange um. Uh, notes there, that there are certain larger trees that require planting uh, strips. Uh, at least five feet, uh, sometimes as, as much as eight feet, so it depends on the tree selection there. Uh, and that um, certain trees would need uh, to have a appropriate width. So anyway, that, that's the alternative language that, that we have proposed in the text form tonight. Uh, there is one more part of this alternative, the next slide. So, um, this part E here is where uh, Gordon is the position of city engineer. Uh, would be uh, given some discussion in review of a more detailed plan. That usually comes after preliminary subdivision approval. And uh, this is when we understand where all of those utilities and street lights and. Hydrants and things are, are necessary. Uh, it's usually when the developer has talked to various franchise utilities and figured things out. Um, the second uh, sentence there basically said, in cases, these cases, options for relocating. Uh, is the um, the, the street signs and things and uh, come first, and first it's explored. Uh, and possibly with a, a selection of a different species of, of tree. Uh, to the approved list, so that's one of those things that Gordon would be a- aware of and, and be discussing with the um. Uh, with, with the developer, sometimes it will be possible to, to adjust things and other times it just won't. Uh, next slide please. Um, so alternate, alternatives summary here, uh, we are suggesting uh. The street tree spacing range from twenty five to forty feet, the engineer allowed. To adjust the spread if agility, safety issues are present and no other option. Can't move the utility or different tree from the city list doesn't work. And uh, no change proposed for spacing of other trees, these would be trees inside property. These are talking about is just a standard for the streets, a street tree spacing, if I can say. Uh, next to this line. Moving along to the next topic of interest, it was open space as part of some, of divisions. So some background, uh, council work session of February sixth, uh, there were two. Uh, options of some cities that the project consultant Elizabeth Decker had uh. Had, had offered there, had shown with, uh, considering using, uh, the council uh, expressed. Interest in the Sherwood, pretty sure we're up in there. And so that was incorporated into the draft, uh, that is part of uh, exhibit two. Uh, planning mission uh, through the hearing on April eighth. Uh, uh, agreed with the idea of, of including open space. Uh, it was uh, the staff's suggestion there that there be a threshold um, of this applying. At twenty eight lots. Staff recommended. Uh, council public hearing uh, May seventh, there were some questions, clarifications of the uh, draft code options for providing open space. And really a, a more of an understanding of what counts and what does not count. For the minimum five percent open space as proposed, uh, next uh, slide. So as part of the staff report that we have for this evening, uh, we did uh, provide. A table, this table was not a part of the code. Uh, but it, it is extractions uh, from the, the code of what would count and would not count if we had an item. Uh, that came forward as part of a development plan. And so I'm not gonna go through all of these, uh, hopefully I'll try to take a, a look at them ahead of the, uh, the hearing tonight. Uh, I'll, I'll mention one, maybe the third road down, uh, vegetated water quality swale. Bio swale, it's intended for, for, for treatment, so vegetated would mean that it has some. Type of vegetation to it, uh, some, some plant life, uh, this wouldn't be the uh, the concrete detention. Type of facility that has no plants to it, so. Uh, that's why we have sort of yes, if vegetated landscaping and serving as, for, for treatment purposes. Uh, also important is kind of shown on the far uh, right column there, uh, we kind of repeat things, but. Uh, the need for having this in a tract. Uh, or, or a conservation easement is, is important and uh. Uh, that, uh, that's kind of one of the things that, uh, I'll, I can go on the next slide here and talk a little bit more about. So, um. What the, I, I, I showed this slide, slide thirty three from the May seventh. Public hearing, and it just sort of summarized the arguments in favor and against uh, the planning commissions. Uh, uh, this is more than, again, not uh, opposed to the open space, it was more of the. Uh, city staff recommendation that there be a threshold for, for a number of lots and uh, certainly. Uh, by a commission had good recommendation and more open space uh. And uh, can be integrated into some, some things that are a very small lot. This graphic here uh, that we, we showed chose uh. Uh, basically how, how small you can get it, uh, the, the smallest size uh, subdivision is for lots. And seven thousand five hundred is the minimum lot size of the R one zone. And so this is just kind of an illustration of showing, well, we got that small, you'd have uh. One thousand five hundred square feet of, of open space, and that's not, not really. Uh, something that the city would be, be interested, uh, should the developer decide to more ask the city to say, hey, would you be willing to take this? Cause it's really, the way that the code is proposed, an option of uh. Having it maintained either by a homeowners association, the city, or other legal entity. Legal entity might be a nature conservatory or some sort of group that would take it over, so. In cases like this, it would probably be a homeowners association form. To the extent that it would remain a homeowners association through time, that's a big question. But um, anyways, uh, just wanted to show this graphic again as how small maybe a subdivision can get. Uh, if there isn't a threshold for um, for, for, for number to apply there, and next um, slide there. Uh, okay, this one is just uh, comments from DLCD uh, that um. Were received, they were part of the record, uh, and uh, they are also suggesting a. Uh, that the uh, open space applied to larger subdivisions. Um, one of the things we didn't mention at the May seventh hearing is the staff observation about a loophole. Uh, we did mention this to the planning commission, um, the idea of, well, you can partition something first. If you do have a minimum lots size or, or a number for, for open space, uh, you know, can somebody get out of that by partitioning? Uh, the property first and then, you know, later dividing, yes, they, they, they could, so. Uh, we have kind of an idea for that, and so next um. Uh, next slide, um. So here's kind of the alternatives that, that we have tonight, it's new to the record. Uh, instead of twenty eight, uh, we are uh, uh, proposing that maybe fourteen. Uh, lots, fourteen or more would be the threshold for when the, the five percent open space is required. And then also this part E here, this is the sort of port. Uh, the potential loophole that I just mentioned there. And basically, it sort of requires that the developer uh, provide a master plan. Uh, that illustrates uh, where that open space would go. And then further requires the developer to, to record a binding agreement on the future sale of property. There uh, with respect to the open space. Uh, so that, that's the um, alternative that, you know, uh, next slide there kind of shows our justification. Fourteen or more, really, there's kind of this comparison in uh, but page six of the staff report. This kind of shows these, these numbers, um. A comparison there, what the five percent means and uh. Why we, we uh, propose that lot size threshold would, would be at that uh, one thousand, one hundred. One hundred thousand, or is it five thousand? But anyways, I, I, that would also, we have a, a, another threshold in here. Five thousand square feet is enough to create active style, open space, and that would be something that you add. A recreational element of swing or, or horseshoes or, or something. So anyways, uh, next slide. Uh, just to summarize things, alternative summary, minimum five percent uh, proposing at fourteen plus. In, in number of, of units of lots and uh, partition uh, of, of um. A property that is uh, again, that, that number of one hundred and five, five thousand square feet. Roughly about two. Roughly about two point four acres. Needs a master plan to show where the five percent possible and restrictive covenant recorded with the partition binding of future owners, explaining how. Future open space is provided with future land division. Next slide. Coming to the last one here, this is AH zone changes and some background work session held. For proposed AH. Changes that were made at that time and then subsequently. At least twenty days prior to the April eighth planning commission hearing, we notified. All owners of AH zone properties provided notice specific to the key change. Finding cause your recommendation on April eighth. Did not support the staff recommended changes, so we're kind of showing them struck out there, the three acre minimum lot size increase and increase. From existing seven thousand five hundred square foot minimum lot size. And did not support the prohibition on the ability to divide land. Council meeting of May seventh. I asked for some clarifications to the city AH zone. Specifically, if no changes are introduced now, at what point in the future would we expect to see them? And so. Next slide, this this is the policy from the comprehensive plan, the recently adopted comprehensive plan. That says that the city is to initiate a process to phase out the. Agricultural holding zone, it doesn't say when, but the the idea is that. Would be newer than land use designation to areas that are currently within. The agricultural holding district agricultural uses still allow its areas. But but outside the city limits. Urban zoning district will be applied upon annexation. The next slide there, so that one shows one of the things, we also have kind of. Large enlarged version of the city zoning map here on the table, but. The same map is shown there on the screen. And there's a couple of notes there too, the the city limits and the city urban growth boundary are the same. So there there are no annexable areas within the city at this time. And the areas in green there are zone AH, so you get an idea of how much. Land is left in the city remaining AH. At one time it was more because with JR three and a few other. Some divisions they have changed over to the art zones that are shown in the light yellow and the brown. So I just wanted to show that. Was already bad, next slide. As a question, if no changes are introduced to AH now, at what point? Do you have future study or otherwise the changes be proposed? And so the quick answer is that housing needs analysis, it's a statute rule. All described in there. You can initiate that at any time, it's an amendment to the comprehensive plan. One of the things that DLCD is farming land conservation and development is doing right now to a lot of rulemaking. Is creating a new methodology. It's not necessarily just the PSU study, Gordon earlier mentioned that there's projections by Portland State University. That they have for for population there, they. See, well, this is where, what what city of Carleton's most to how they're supposed to grow. The new methodology actually assigns a portion of needed. Of needed housing in a regional basis. So that methodology is expected to be produced by the end of this year. And it would probably be a number that that would be given to Carlton for that that purpose. And once that's known, it's a time when the city can initiate housing needs analysis. Or probably the grant money that is available as well. But a key component of the housing needs analysis is housing production strategy. That's kind of you figure out how much land in twenty years that's needed for housing. And that the strategy part is that you say, okay, let's rezone the AH zone. And you look at inside the urban growth boundary first before you look at expanding. So you do this kind of analysis where you look inside first, kind of be accommodated and then if it's not then. It's a look at to where the urban growth boundary might be expanded. So in that shell, that's that's housing needs analysis and the instance that at least I foresee. The city taking a harder look at the AH zone. Next slide. This is a slide from the May seventh hearing and. We just wanted to summarize sort of this in favor of by the mission. Good thoughts here as far as they. As I mentioned, I think in the last hearing there, there's now a lot of partitions that that come forward in the AH zone. And also always an opportunity here that we can imagine maybe in the next two years. For a future housing needs analysis and the ability to look at things a little bit more holistically. Argument against though, small hot sizes present operational challenges for traditional rural infrastructure systems like. Ground wells, things like that and assembling small parcels of land, especially if there's a small and seven thousand five hundred square feet. It can be a challenge. So so that's what that graphic sort of shows is a scenario. Next slide. Alternative that we're proposing tonight instead of three acres, one acre. The one acre would still allow a lot of things back, part of the staff report. Boots of these cattle ratios that are existing, three acres. Livestock. Down to one acre. So one acre alliance with allowed uses. Next slide. I just to. Alternative here would be to. Allow, so we're not going to make any change there, that that would just remain the way it is. Would be. Allowed and we could process them, it would just be a middle plot size of the alternative of one acre. Instead of the seventy. So I'll go down to slide five six. There we go. So this is page twelve of the staff report, page ninety two of agenda packet. And it just summarizes all three of the items there. Planning commission recommendation and the alternative. That I summarized this evening, that's identified in the staff report. So this might be a table utilized for the last slide. That I have as part of the presentation. And put out to my seven there. So should the city council choose to approve and adopt? The changes identified. We have a sample motion that's on page twelve there and it says acknowledges the. The two exhibits, exhibits one and two identifying several changes. And except for that you would just identify a street tree spacing or open space. AH zone and then indicate the desired reputation from the. From that table, the last slide, happy to answer questions at this time.
Talking about the egg holding. New time going forward that that. Would be doing away with the AH designation. Is that going to exist for the current AH that's within our city boundary? So that'll remain the same.
So there is a policy. That speaks, I mean, this is where we'll likely identify the policy and say that. The AH zone is not intended to to stay that inside the urban growth boundary, there should be. Urban zones, residential, commercial zones. You know, one of the things with the advantage of housing needs analysis is you get a clear picture of next twenty years of what the need is. And do you need to rezone all the AH zone or just a part of it? And so that would be part of that, that strategy is to determine, may maybe there are some some properties. That are severely encumbered by. Floodplain. Wetlands, that sort of thing. So that that's also sort of evaluated as well, there might be certain properties that you say, well, wait a minute, wait, maybe we do want to keep the agricultural. Holding district. To some areas on the along along the the river, maybe along on on creek or. Or or Yam Hill. So anyway, it's just kind of, the the it's not to say that that it will go away, but there is a policy that that says it. You know, it is a holding zone, it's sort of a temporary zone.
As long as a farmer is farming that land, I mean, no rights are taken away from the farmer to do.
Oh, sure. Yeah, even if the property is is rezoned, there are protections in the code. Not going to become a nonconforming use of the zone. But there are protections of the code that that allow that, as long as the person is 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 there. Has recognized kind of the grandfather, because a lot of codes call it the grandfather code, but nonconforming use is where where that that's found. And so there are protections in place that would allow somebody to continue to farm. Until, of course, they they change early, they stop that.
Any other questions? Counselor Skipper. Got anything?
I have questions. So with the tree spacing. With the tree spacing, you're recommending the twenty five to forty ran range. Are there any issues with the proximity of the trees in in terms of like fire? If we had any issues with. I guess with with fire or something like that, would that be an issue, trees being close together?
Oh, you mean being too close? Good question. I would think if they're healthy enough, I wouldn't think that there'd be an issue with fire. I'm I'm not an arborist, so I don't really know if any thoughts on that, Gordon, or that it was too close. Would there be a any concerns that you can think of of being fire?
Well, there's always a trade off between trees and non-trees with regards to fire. I mean, we've all seen forest fires, trees are close together. The forest fire goes up. You know, it gets more intense. So, yeah, if you clump them together, then there's more potential for fire. That's just the trade off that's made. We're not in a forest in the city, so what the, is it a huge? Increase in potential, I can't tell you that, but we're not in a forest, so.
It can spread from canopy to canopy fairly easily. And then, as we talked before, they are finding a lot of fires, our majority of structure fires in a fire situation. Happened because of burners, you know, from direct flame contact. So obviously, if you have a more tree, the burning canopy, it again becomes a a three dog.
I think it also does to some degree depend on the tree types, I can give you an example during the Oakland fires living in California in the Bay Area at the time. And the Oakland fire became far more destructive because there was. Planting of eucalyptus trees in the area and they just blew up.
Fire, but it's good for the environment too, having more trees, so.
And yeah, yeah, and it puts a burden on the homeowner too, because if. Like usually the person that pressed the tree is not the person that's going to be there forever. So you have someone new. And like you've got to maintain the tree and mostly probably don't maintain the tree or do anything and. And it could become an issue, like my concern with having like close trees together is it's more. It's more maintenance to people and at the same time, I guess you you have that issue. With the fire which are becoming more constant in Oregon, the states in general, so. Yeah, I I I guess the range. Seems fine, but I I feel like the forty feet was allowed some a little more spacing there for the trees.
What scenario again, will we proposing perhaps twenty five feet?
Sorry.
What scenario again, were we perhaps proposing twenty five feet?
We can go to the slide there, we gotta make sure we come back for. Other comments, but we can also, when after public count, the slide twenty six, please. So. Yeah, after public comment, then I will come back to. The this slide here and it will show the twenty five foot one would be the planning commission one. So the first line there, planning commission recommendation is twenty five feet everywhere, anywhere for code as a standard. And so the alternative is just to the to the right of that, where it's a it's a range from twenty five. To to forty based on. Sure tree spread. So.
So it's determined by the canopy, is that what you're saying?
So by the canopy, correct?
Anything else? I, yeah, I couldn't tell who's.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest, I didn't know Scott, if this is, I mean, because there's time for council deliberation after public comment, like, do we want to? Hold our questions till then, or are we asking questions now before public comment, or how do you recommend?
Any clarification of staff, you're welcome to to ask me questions, including Gordon too, he's been involved and Tyler as well. For for what's been proposed and then, yeah, and then we definitely, as there is new text. Introduced tonight, it's appropriate to open up the hearing.
All right, I'll just ask you one quick question then for clarification. So on the open space requirement. You know, I was reading DLCD's comments. And I'm I'm assuming that city staff and planners went through and they had some concern about. Can doing it for smaller subdivisions because of the implications and potential statutory statutory conflicts. Did we, did you feel confident with, you know, the fourteen lot proposal? That any of those implications or potential conflicts wouldn't wouldn't come up?
Yeah, this is the test of time that we'll we'll see, Tyler's nodding his head to see if there is, if there will be. Somebody that that may challenge it. It's interesting because the comments that were received from DLCD did not identify any specific rule or statute. They kind of said, hey, this this is what we we see. Would it reduce housing production? Yes, it would. It's kind of one of the reasons why we we threw in the easement. The easement would not take up a lot area and so that the one example that I showed of the four lot. Subdivision, it's shown with an easement, so you can eke out four lots and not be stuck with three. So I I'm thinking that, you know, that sort of answers the one concern that DLCD had. With respect to housing production. And the other answer that we we see is 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 making a threshold there for minimum lots of about fourteen there, so. lots of about fourteen there. So DLCD can always uh challenge it, but they didn't use, they didn't specify any case law, they didn't specify rule or statute. My guess is that uh if you keep it at four, I know, always discuss if there they can, they can send back, but um uh, my guess is that they'll, they they won't, they'll 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 keep it. Tyler's nodding his head, you think so?
I, yeah, I agree with what Scott is saying, that it's they didn't point to anything specific. And generally, they their comments do point to specific conflicts that exist. Uh, so to me, that comment felt more like we don't like this. Then you can't do it.
Is that it? Any other comments? Okay, um, there being no more comments from the council, we will reopen the public hearing. Um, any person attending tonight will be invited to testify. We follow the same rules as we've always followed. So if you have a comment, please, or testimony, please um raise your hand. Okay, Ms. Drell. Suzie?
Hello?
Okay, there we got you.
Um, I live on four sixteen Link Street. My full name is Susan Turrell. Um, I am used to be the horticulturist for one of the biggest like are the assistant horticulturist for one of the biggest landscape nurseries that grew street trees in the state of Oregon. Um, I wanted, based on the discussion you've already had about street trees, I'd like to point out, we don't live in a forest. We in fact live in a city. And um eucalyptus is not in the proposed street street tree list, nor is it in the existing street tree list. Um, the other point I would like to make is twenty-five feet is in fact not close spacing. And um all of the trees in the proposed list are closer to thirty are thirty feet and probably less than that canopy. Um, there's a few that were recommended for us, uh, eight foot or ten foot um landscape strip, which isn't even in the city code that are wider um tree canopy than that. Um, I'd also like to point out the street trees on Main Street downtown are closer to twenty foot apart than twenty-five feet apart. So um it would be confusing to me that we allowed our downtown to be shaded and our uh subdivisions to suffer in heat. Um, I think I submitted a public comment letter for your meeting last month. And I'm not sure if you saw that, but it outlined all the benefits of street trees. Um, Gordon, our city engineer should be able to comment on the benefits of uh urban street trees for stormwater mitigation. They absorb the first thirty um, the first thirty inches, thirty percent of rainfall is absorbed in the canopy. It just sits there on the leaves. The second thirty percent is absorbed through the root system and dispersed to the atmosphere through the process of evapotranspiration. And then the remaining water that falls is better absorbed in the soil, because the soil is aerated by the roots and the leaf litter on the ground. Um, I would hazard to say whether you like trees or you don't like trees. And regardless of what end of the political spectrum you're on, everybody appreciates shade on a ninety-degree day, which we'll be soon experiencing. Um, I don't know how many of you have tried to walk downtown from your homes and on a ninety-degree day with a child or maybe had your kids ride their bikes. It's hot. Our city streets are not shaded, and they should be. Um, twenty-five feet is not close together. I can't stress that enough. That is not close spacing. The other, the last thing I want to say is your local streets in your city code should be um have the um landscape strips included as they are shown on their on the transport transportation system plan. There should be street trees. Um, and every one of those are planting strips at least, so that in the future, when people who um appreciate trees as the rest of the nation is doing in their cities um will at least have the infrastructure in place where we can plant them. If you pave that space, there will be never a chance in the future for local streets to have street trees. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments? Alrighty, if we have no further comments or additional comments, we will go ahead and close the hearing now and give this council a chance to deliberate and decisions.
Can we adjust the street tree from twenty-foot spacing to forty? Depending on the canopy?
Yes.
Or the canopy recommendation, or I I'm I'm not a tree expert. Trees are awesome, but.
In fact, there is on the proposed list, looking at the that that's coming forward. Again, uh, shows uh some trees uh at a twenty foot space. A lot of them at twenty-five, but but there are some at twenty, so you could go, uh, yeah, you could go twenty is is twenty to forty.
Okay.
The deciding factor should be the can, correct?
It would be the canopy, correct, yeah.
And that's what provides the shade, right?
Look downtown Carl in a twenty-foot base. Many times you practically stumble, the drift of the sidewalk could be destroyed because of the tree so close because of the root system in there. You have a forty-foot canopy, you have less tree on the ground, but you have same aerial space in the air. Take two forty-footers, take up the room plus extra room with three twenty-five of the canopy coverage. And how it's set, you know, it says twenty-five to forty, so that determines the stripping of where the houses are, where the fire hydrants are. Yes, there, you're gonna need to be a tree person that goes in there and recommends, okay, we should have twenty-five foot and a thirty foot here, or twenty and fifteen, or however they come up with their recommendations for the strip of property that you're having to deal with. Street signs, fire hydrants, the electrical boxes, new neighborhoods, all powers underground. You got them big boxes all over the neighborhood.
I was gonna say, I, and I'm not trying to shut this down, but we have three items that we've got to discuss and get ready to vote on tonight. So just keep that in mind as we're chatting.
I was just gonna say one final thing about the distance, uh, but I have been, you know, learned from arborists that there's a concern of, you know, if the trees are planted too close, like twenty-five or less that the root systems start growing towards each other, and if they meet them, one, the trees compete with one another. One of those trees ultimately wins out, so we can see other one. And uh, so that's another issue to consider.
Counselor Skipper? Did you have it?
Yeah, I think regardless of what what's decided on the spacing, um, I think those engineering controls at the planning level need to be be in there, you know what I mean, to account for the fire hydrant spacing, the the views and all that stuff. So I think what, no matter what options decided, I think that's important. Um, as everybody else is saying, no tree expert here, but I think the argument against the forty-foot canopy could possibly be, that's a larger tree with a larger root system, you know what I mean? So you, you got to think about that, if if there's enough space for those larger trees with the taller canopies. So that's just something to keep in mind, and it it sounds great to say, oh, forty feet, you know, with a a big canopy, but what is that doing to Grant's point on infrastructure and sidewalks and things like that with a larger root system? Possibly, so something to think about.
Uh, I think looking to the future, we we currently have issues with sidewalks. There are a lot of places in town that don't have sidewalks. So people have issues with maintaining, with having like proper sidewalk in town. So I think we are adding, we adding more issues to that sidewalk problem that we have. Like sure, initially, uh, the development will will look great, will have the trees and the sidewalks will look good, but eventually um, there's gonna need some maintenance there and yeah, I just don't know. I I think I I think for the 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 current time, it it would make sense. I like trees, I like shade. Sure, but I also want people to um not have to deal with all the issues that might come with the having trees a lot of trees on the sidewalk. Because they cost money, but then at the day, it does cost money to someone. That and it's not the city that's gonna pay for the cost, it's gonna be the the homeowner.
Just, I don't know if this helps in terms of perspective or not, because I was kind of curious about distances, so I measured my spoken to somebody about this. I measured my sidewalk out in front of my house, which has trees in front of it, of course, but from my neighbor, if you, you guys because I'm just right up at the top of the hill, right? So we've got kind of an open area there. So I measured from, if you can envision this, from the edge of my neighbor's lawn, which would be where there's actual lawn there, back down, I was measuring out forty feet, which brought a tree spacing would be from the edge of my neighbor's lawn down to um the stop sign right there at Cunningham and Grant. From the stop sign back to my neighbor's lawn was forty feet. I don't know if that helps envision what forty feet would look like in the spacing or if it was does not, but that was I don't have a problem with that. Twenty feet was two trees in that, you know, obviously gonna be two trees in that same space. It's a little bit tight. Yeah, and that's where I was going. If that gives you any indication, but we need to, so we need to, we've got three motions that we need to get through. And that's for the trees and.
Hi, I guess here, so uh, so there there's no more deliberation of once again, we can put that uh slide up there, too. So uh, we have this table here uh, to kind of simplify things, it works in conjunction with a a sample motion uh that we have on the last page of staff report, page twelve there. And so uh, yeah, the motion would kind of you would uh uh to to approve exhibit one and two, uh, except for uh one of these things that were sort of in conflict with the staff recommendation versus planning commission recommendation and the alternatives that we have presented tonight. So uh, basically, the the motion uh would uh, readers are showing up there, uh, would incorporate uh one of the three uh options there, so uh, just kind of bringing that up here and uh, unless there's further deliberation.
So on the tree, I would, I'll go to staff recommendation. I know, I know, fair voting.
Well, we need a motion first, so somebody needs to start.
Uh, we need to talk about the other two as well, right?
Okay, we divide these up separately, so we can get done with one and move on to the next one. Correct, so there's one one motion, and uh, if the motion dies, there could be another motion. Um, so I, that, you know, um.
You could take each item separately and say, okay, agree, we agree to this on the street tree.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
Move down to open space.
Well, in in alignment with Robert's Rules of Order, if if you want to separate these out, you would call for a decision. So, yeah.
I don't, I guess I don't.
Yeah, I'm trying to make it as least complicated as possible, but uh, yeah, it it you know, these these three items appear to be the the sticklers that uh, that there's maybe some um thoughts either way, but uh, I I think, hopefully, the council understands uh, the the options there. We can go back to the um, slide twenty-six, too, if if necessary to if it helps out there, um, where you you just make a a motion approving exhibits one and two. Uh, with the exception of, you know, when you just identify street tree spacing, either the stamp recommendation, the planning commission recommendation, or the alternative, just kind of go through uh each row there. Uh, and if there's a uh second and then a vote, that's what gets passed. If the doesn't get passed, then another motion uh with a second, and that sort of thing. Uh, so that's, that's, I guess that's what we uh would recommend if the council's ready.
I just, just, just have a question in the language of the one on the streets, the last part where it says, uh okay, and adjustment only if utility slash safety issues. I'm wondering if we just need to sort of make that a little more clear about.
So, um, yeah, so I I I abbreviated all this stuff. Uh, there is a lot of, we can go back to the slide to to show you where that is. Um, uh, so that would be part E there, that that has a lot more to it. Uh, it's that's just abbreviated, then we'll go back up to the slide. Yeah, scroll up a little over.
So could we just go item by item and agree and disagree, and then add the motion like we talked about?
Let's see if you have the census for uh or, yeah, number fifteen there uh shows that uh in further detail under E there is, oh, that's not it. Okay, that's a different one. That's that's open space.
On page eighty-two of the packet.
Two of the packets. Yeah, so it's it's further up there, but.
Well, you're looking for that.
Under number nine. So that's, that's um yeah, page eighty-two of the package, that would have the whole description there of of what it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Skipper?
Sorry, I probably should have lowered my hand. I was just trying to wade through the process to see how how we're gonna propose it, because I do think it's three separate issues, and it sounds like we're getting closer to, I have three different opinions on each one, so they're not all the same. So I guess I'll just sit tight and see what what we're, how we move forward.
I would go, well, I think, uh, yeah, the council has the has the sample mo- motion there in mind, it's really just a a motion to approve exhibits one and two, and then uh, the twenty-six, uh, we can have up there now to show uh, the the options for uh three items that we discussed.
I would like to see street tree spacing range from twenty-five to, or not twenty-five, from twenty uh modified to twenty to forty feet, based on the mature spread of tree tree canopy. So that would be an alter, the alternate option. And modify, taking the twenty-five down to twenty. That way, it gives us the flexibility to put in different trees, different canopy sizes and to space them accordingly.
Any comments, support on that one?
Twenty-five feet is, to me, the lower acceptable threshold for me.
I think twenty-five is the lowest, twenty is not necessary.
Not necessary.
Okay.
I'm at twenty-one, twenty to forty, or twenty-five to forty.
Yeah.
Good range for whoever the tree person that comes in, figure something out with that.
Okay.
I can agree with that.
And then to continue with the statement, as shown up there with the uh. Adjustments with utilities and that sort of thing.
Okay, right. Councillor President Skipper.
Yeah, it sounds like there's pretty good consensus on that.
Okay, we made progress.
That's one. Okay, so do we want to vote on that, or do we want to just try to do them all together?
Just keep, keep going.
Keep going. Yeah, open space.
Open space.
I, if I may, Mayor, um I'm okay with the staff recommendation of leaving at, at twenty-eight lots or more. As proposed.
Same here.
Yeah, me too, I think that gives a good size therefore. Open space.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay.
A H zone.
And A H zones.
Um I would like to go with staff recommendation to increase lot size seven. To get to three acres and prohibit land division.
I agree. That's where I'm at. Go down.
Okay.
Park Street, got her, we've already got that problem.
Okay. Councillor, Councillor President.
You guys threw, you guys threw a wrench in the consensus. I um, I, I see the benefits, um I also see the alternative option as being, being suitable. Um changing it to one acre and allow land divisions. Um, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the planning commissioner recommended no changes. It does sound like, you know, there's an opportunity coming up in the future. Um as I know, there's been a lot of confusion on exactly what we're talking about, even amongst the community. Um s- so part of, you know, that is community outreach and making them, like myself, I had to sit down with. You know, the city manager and, and get um Gordon's input and kind of understand, well, what are we talking about, so. Um I finally feel like I'm at that point, but I could um. I could see all of them as viable options, to be honest, so I don't have a strong opinion either, either way.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Let's see, there you go, right? Well, it's right here, okay, I get it. I can try this. Um. Move to approve uh LA twenty twenty-four dash zero two with all changes as shown in exhibit one. In addition to all changes shown in exhibit two, except the following. Um for streets, tree, street, tree spacing. It'll be twenty-five to forty feet. And including exceptions for utilities as noted um in the memo. Um. And for green space, it will be uh set the threshold at twenty-eight lots or more. And for A H zone change will be for um. The minimum, it will be changed to three acres and prohibit land division.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, city recorder, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Hill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councillor Thompson-Ryser, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councillor Erickson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councillor Brendan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councillor Ward Mullen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councillor President Skipper, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mayor Watkins, your vote?
Aye.
Approved, all in approval.
Okay. We go to celebrate now?
Leading us through this.
You know, and I, I, I've been thinking about this a lot, and I really um please. All of the people that have worked so hard on this, Scott and Elizabeth and CJ and. And Gordon, and there was a lot, a lot of effort on put into that, and Amy, yes. Amy and.
You got a lot of folks on.
Yeah. So you guys are just. You earned your keep on that one, for sure, but thank you very much.
Pleasure. So it'll be an ordinance that will come back for another meeting or.
With the move of City Hall and. Well, I might be confused about what people were expecting me to, to say. So are we talking about our next meeting?
Special meeting.
So. If. Nor this requires two readings through our rules. Um if we don't do a first reading of the ordinance tonight, uh then we will, the first reading, our next scheduled meeting is. For first reading, and then a second reading would be in September, and then it would take thirty days.
Why would, why would we not do a first reading tonight?
There's no reason that we. We just want to make sure everybody is aware of the timeline.
Couldn't we shorten the time for the second reading?
Ye- yes. If you mean before August, the August meeting, yes. Uh Shannon and I have discussed some dates that we believe could work.
So it would depend on everybody's schedule, my people's schedule. Um and that with, with everything going on in City Hall, I say nine because your leaders in the second. Just with that, but just with the quicksand that we're. To get it recorded.
A question, and then you said after the second reading, once all approved. Then you, would you say there was another thirty day hold, okay, for public comment, right? You know, something. Appeal, right?
You get, if I may interject, you, it's a little hard to hear, especially what Shannon was saying. I just want to make sure we're, we're not rushing this, I, 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 I want to understand the timeline, I want to allow for public comment, I want. Make sure we're fully transparent, you know, as there has been some um community input on this, and so. I want to make sure I hear that correctly and that we're not rushing something, a first reading or a second reading. To get this through for any particular reason that I'm unaware of.
My understanding is you could wait to do a first reading until August. Um you would do a first reading tonight, and then you could work on scheduling a second reading and special meeting prior to August. Or you could do a second reading in August.
What would be the argument for delaying on the first reading tonight?
To have a fully compiled and drafted version of the code attached to the ordinance.
That would be top August, so it'd be like two months from now.
It could be at a special meeting for that.
I, I understand Kevin's point of view, but I also understand that, you know, I don't want to see undue delay either, so.
I would like to see the complete finished. Version attached to the ordinance. It's just like.
I agree, I think we can carve out some time um to get this ordinance completed and attached. Um and we could, we could hold a special meeting uh sometime next month. When that's prepared, that would be my preference, but I respect everybody else's opinion.
Again, it would probably do without Amy and I, because it'd be time and then stop running it. Um and if that would be the only thing on the agenda, and I guess at this point, I would ask, so when did you envision you'd like? To be helped back from thirty days. That you have the appeal process, because you need two readings of the ordinance, and then you've got additional thirty days. So is it, are you carving out one special meeting? And then you have a second reading in August and it's adoption in September? Or are you having two special meetings? What is the council?
I think one special meeting.
And then the second one is in August with an adoption in September.
I mean, my concern about undue delay, and I understand, you know, having the, you know, not rushing it as well. But we all have to keep in mind that there, there's a lot of activity out in the community and. Um applications that could be coming forward and we don't want to have, you know. Lose that window of time and, and everything we've worked so hard for, it's like, you know. That's my concern.
Okay, can we have a special meeting in July? Or a special meeting?
Right now, we have no council meetings in July. So it would be, you could have one special meeting in July, or you could figure out, and that's what I'm asking for, is when did you envision having this adopted?
Hey, you have an, can we have a, a special meeting in June?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. I mean, surely, we gotta get this done.
Yeah, I mean.
Or it just, we're twiddling our head.
Special meeting in June and a special meeting in July.
And then after that, there's a thirty day field process, so it would be kind of putting it to the August, I guess, before it was adopted.
It depends when you're second.
Well, right, I mean, at the early. That's what I.
How far apart do the special meetings have to be?
There's no specific. Two-week pipeline, the only consideration will be providing enough. Opportunity for the public to get the meetings, which is the reason that would require reading set to set.
These meetings would be completely remote.
I think you'll stand, well, I just, uh, yeah, so, uh, I mean, I have my calendar, I guess my only concern is. That with an ordinance, I think the charter would, would say you'd have to have a jury. To make sure, but uh my concern is getting into the summer. Dates here, there will be councillors on vacation, and then we put all of this together and all of a sudden, it's a date that uh we don't have tomorrow or something. That, so that would be my thought, if with a special meeting, we might take this time to identify some dates possibly, or it sounds like that's the. Council, so there's a special meeting, uh which case we kind of clean up some things here. Uh this doesn't, the public hearing is closed, so there really isn't any opportunity for uh for any further um public comments. Of what, what's uh, what's, what's made, uh Shannon mentioned the deal, I certainly for those who are standing, but. Uh, yeah, really was, I'm thinking, yeah, if there's interest in a special meeting, oh, we'll make that happen. I uh, I'm just believing, you know, one of those states.
I want to make sure I heard Scott correct, so there's no, after we just adopted it, or we didn't adopt it, I apologize, um. There's no more for these meetings we're talking about, there's no more room for public comment, is that what I heard you say?
Yep, uh hearing is, is closed.
Be opportunity for public comments as part of the regular meeting, but not public testimony relating to. Possibly splitting hairs, but yeah.
And so in there, we had a meeting next Tuesday, all remote. Public can still comment via computer, correct?
Yes.
Hypothetical, I'm just asking about.
Yes.
I, I personally judge it just to the first reading today, just to save time, be efficient, but that's just my, my. Just kind of waste staff time and everyone's time, just doing.
That's my opinion too, but.
I think now that I understand it a little bit clearer, I just, I was, that's, that point with that Scott made clarified things a little bit more for me, so. I'm, I think I'm okay with the first reading as well, I just was a little bit confused about how the process will go forward.
So you're saying do the first reading tonight?
Yes.
First reading tonight, uh special meeting that we approve.
What does, what does the special meeting do um as far as the timeline, we're still looking at adoption in August, no matter. If we meet one next week and the week after, is that correct?
But the ordinance would go into effect, so the updated development code would go into effect thirty days following the second reading. And adoption of the ordinance, so if we have the first reading tonight, have a special meeting. At some point in June, and it would be thirty days from, well, it'll be thirty days no matter when that meeting is. Right, it would be coming back to July, assuming we hold the second reading. If it passes this month.
Thank you, I, I agree, I, I understand, I, I just, again, meeting. Three weeks in a row feels like a rush, I mean, we, we, we cut off the meeting last week or last month, you know, and that basically extended it thirty days. And now we're all of a sudden in a rush to, to get this done in two weeks, that doesn't really make sense to me. We've, I'm okay with the first reading, but I'm not okay with meeting every month of June. It, that just feels, feels a little bit inappropriate and kind of like rushing things.
We could, we could do the, we could do the first reading tonight and do the next one in a special meeting in July.
Currently don't have a meeting scheduled for July, July second to be that, we could hold a special.
Let's do it then, July seventh.
Yeah.
Late, late.
Yeah.
Is that, are you okay with that, Kevin?
Yeah, I think we, I, I keep on going both ways on this a little bit, but um. I mean, I would like everybody, can everybody open their calendars to make sure we're, we're available, cause like Scott said, I, I'd hate to do that with, on a, on a holiday week and then. Half of us can't be there, so July second seems like it could possibly be a little problematic and. The staffing issues, you know what I mean, so I want to be fair to everybody's schedule.
I have city council meeting on my calendar for July second.
Make sure I'm within wifi range.
Uh you can walk that line. And I understand the part of saying we're rushing it, we're not, I mean, it's just the reading of the thing. Finally.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't feel.
I think the rush comes from, as long as we've been working on it, it's, we're like ready to get it done.
Been, and I mean, this whole process has been over, over a year, and we've all worked very hard, and as I've said. Potential applications coming forward, we can't lose the opportunity. Our new code.
It equals up to be less video now, this Friday.
Here we are, so do we need to vote on the July second or?
My hearing that we're doing the first reading tonight.
Yes.
Yes.
We do the first reading, then we're, especially maybe.
Yes, so we would first need a motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seventy-five. One, an ordinance amending the Carlton Development. read ordinance twenty twenty four dash seventy five one, an ordinance amending the Carlton Development Code, Title seventeen of the municipal code in its entirety and adopting the amended development code language as passed tonight by title only. That would be a voice vote, so long as that passes, we, I would read that same thing I just read by title only, and then we would have a roll call vote. And assuming passage, that would be our first.
If I say so, so I mean, it's sort of, so we can, I I don't have that motion.
I don't believe that we have that script prepared.
So I move that we read the ordinance as, by title only, as stated by.
Ordinance twenty four, thirty five, one.
Yes.
By title only.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Then moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Tyler.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash seven five one, an ordinance amending the Carlton Development Code, Title seventeen of the municipal code in its entirety and adopting the amended development code language. So now we would have a motion. Approving the first review.
Is there a motion to approve the first reading?
I make a motion that we approve the first reading.
Second.
All in favor? Roll call.
Councilor Hill?
Aye.
Councilor Thompson-Ryser?
Aye.
Councilor Erickson?
Aye.
Councilor Rendell?
Aye.
Councilor Ward-Woolen?
Aye.
Council President Skipper?
Aye.
Mayor Walton?
Aye.
All in favor, motion.
New criteria system.
Meeting. But here's July second.
July second, it's already on my calendar.
Anyone who cannot make July.
Will be there.
Council President Skipper, can you make July second?
That's unknown, um, that's kind of why I was hesitant to say yes or no on that, to be dead honest, I I don't know yet, I'd have to get with my family to see what the plans are for that week, so.
What about the end of June?
June twenty fifth.
The end of June looks uh more promising for me, for sure.
Why don't we go for that?
I'm open all of the Tuesdays in June.
No Mondays?
Mondays open.
Oh, wait, sorry, I forgot which city I read.
So the June twenty fifth.
Is that okay with you?
It works for me.
Eleven, eighteen, or twenty fifth.
Okay, June twenty fifth.
It looks for me.
Okay.
Councilor Rendell.
I'm busy, but I can work it, yeah. Yeah, at six, right?
Yeah. Shouldn't be a long meeting, correct?
That's the meeting, but that's up to you all.
Second reading and vote.
Yeah.
Tyler Reeves, roll call.
Yep. Okay. So, June twenty fifth, six P M, be at your computers. All right. Moving right along, are we done now? We got it?
So. Order, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, guys. Okay, items B. Resolution twenty twenty four three, five, seven, updating the master fee schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, now that you had your first reading of the development code, we are one step closer to authorizing accessory dwelling units permitting them in our city. And staff has recognized that our water and sewer billing structure does not account for these, which were growing. To include the dwelling units that help for their water and sewer use and billing. Staff has looked at it and we're not amending any of the fees that you've already approved, we're adding a foot that each water and sewer account will be charged one additional base rate for E D U, so for the U on the subject. This is not unusual in other cities, um in fact, a lot of other cities also charge system development charges for E D U's. Uh, this is partly because of with new use or increased use on a property is increased. So that is why it's good for me today.
But we're not at the meter, right?
Not adding a meter.
And if I understand this correctly, it's just doubling the base rate fee. Okay.
Then usage is count, because it's not a separate meter.
Isn't this kind of uh doesn't this kind of follow a pattern that we already have, with certain people that have two household or two entities on one piece of property?
It is very similar, yes, um, a lot of our defenses have separate meters. But in this case, where an A D U is added on maybe to the rear of the property, where adding another meter would not always be the most easily accessible or feasible, um, and then there's also the S D C charges that come along with the addition of a meter. Um, right now, currently, you can see in the fee schedule, that's over ninety five hundred dollars to add an additional meter, so adding in the extra water and sewer charge base rate is usually more appealing to those that want to add the A D U as opposed to having to do the whole infrastructure cost upfront.
Yep.
Council President Skipper?
Yeah, I have um concerns with this, um, because we aren't, I I understand and I think that there should be a fee, I would just like to see some more data or methodology on that, um, because if you take water, for example, you know, if you're not upsizing or changing your meter, you're, you're gonna go from a sixty three dollar base rate to a hundred and twenty six dollar base rate, whether you're adding a two hundred square foot A D U or um a five hundred, I can't remember what the code allows, but um, so I, and that's just water, I mean, so then, then we're adding on another sixty nine dollars um for sewer, um, when we're paying, when somebody would be paying for the usage, you know, for the water, the consumption, uh, you know, a a a small A D U is not going to um take up the same amount of water and sewer as a home, so if the facilities are in place to to cover that, um, ratepayers are paying that in in the rates that they pay. Um, I can see, you know, obviously, if you're adding an additional meter, then that makes sense, you have two meters, you're paying two base rate charges. Um, I know S D Cs were mentioned, I know other cities use different methodologies, um, access rates, different things, um, that just seems really excessive to me, you know, a hundred twenty five dollars for water and a hundred and forty almost for sewer, just in base rates, before you even get your, your consumption. Um, that's, that just seems crazy to me, um, and to me, that would, you know, that would deter me from, from building an A D U. That's, that's just, I I I would like to see more data on that, I cannot feel comfortable just because of the high base rate charges we have, the high rates we have for sewer and water. That, that just seems a little bit excessive if somebody's not doing anything more to the existing infrastructure besides adding a a sink or toilet, you know, they're gonna pay that with the rates. Um, so I I'm, I'm completely not comfortable with it, I understand there needs to be some sort of additional rate charge, but just essentially doubling the base rate doesn't, doesn't feel good to me.
So are these E D U's are the only allowed in town at like a vacation rental, or they can be a long term rental?
They can be either.
They, they can be either or, so they could be someone in there twenty four, seven, or they're there five nights a week.
Yeah.
I think, so either or.
Either, yeah, depending on how they want to use it, they can use it as a mother-in-law suite, where there's somebody there all the time, or they can choose to use it as a vacation rental, and it's on an as-needed basis.
So it could be a single person or multiple
Right.
people dwelling there with kids.
So we don't have a what the max square footage, it's a certain percentage of the house.
Yeah, I think the max was eight hundred if I remember.
So with that eight hundred square feet, we have no limitation, so I mean, of, I mean, occupying the building, correct?
I'm not going in the house to check.
See if there are, so we know it can be.
Yeah, it could be one, it could be twelve.
Okay.
But we're, but we're metering it already, so if it's one person or twelve, we're, we're metering the water consumption. So they're, they're gonna pay for, for the water they use. I mean, we're talking about a base rate, so if it's one person living in an A D U, they're, they're gonna pay double the base rate.
Yeah.
So say if they took that lot in some areas, like where I'm at, it's almost nine thousand square feet, so if the city allowed it, I I break the house off, redivide it, put a duplex on it, now I've got two, two uh front doors, would I not have two meters?
You would have two meters.
So I'd be charged.
For two basements.
For two base rates.
Yes. So it's kind of the equivalent of a duplex with an A D U, you, you're adding an additional dwelling unit, which is, like, if you were building a house anywhere, we would do the same thing, we would charge them a base. And in this case, we are not charging the consumption, because it's all one meter, there's no way to regulate which dwelling is using which water, so.
But the, but the one meter is gonna get all of the consumption. It's gonna capture the A D U and the, the residents, am I wrong?
It will, you're right, you are correct, it would capture the consumption, but it would not be treated as every other property in town. Councilor Skipper, so every, every town, every house gets charged a base and for water and sewer, so if you don't allow that for A D U's, then we're not people across the board, that, that's, that's.
I can understand that, but it's, you know, we're not adding infrastructure, you know, if it, if we are adding a meter, that makes sense to me. If we're not adding a meter, then yes, I do believe that there should be some charge, but we're pocketing sixty two dollars and eighty one cents, having the same infrastructure that was there before the A D U was built.
Uh, I, I do have a question, so if you have two charges, with the, with those two charges, does it give you, I don't know, five hundred cubic feet or whatever, whatever the base is?
The base rate does not include any.
Any water?
Any water.
Okay.
It is just to have the service.
Just to have the service, okay.
In looking at this, I found one city that had a fairly helpful definition. Uh, they define a residential customer as a customer whose meter serviced only one single family dwelling unit. All dwelling units served by individual meters shall be charged the residential rate for service. Multi-family customers are defined as customers whose meter services more than one dwelling unit. And for purposes of this rate resolution, dwelling unit shall be defined as any place of human habitation designed for occupancy. And for purposes of this rate resolution, dwelling unit shall be defined as any place of human habitation, as an equivalent dwelling unit, you'll often see that in equivalent dwelling unit. And so essentially, as Councilor Erickson said, it treats somebody who's adding an A D U as creating a multi-family. To switch.
I, I agree with Kevin Skipper, that it is kind of restricted if you're gonna build an A D U there, I think it adds a lot of cost to the monthly. Um, especially if you're not gonna be using all the time, it's like a mother-in-law or something, um. But at the same time, I don't want to be different from the rest of town, if, if that's how it works in town, I guess, that's how it works, oh, it's just, it, it is expensive, I don't know. Um. Yeah. Difficult.
I think it's fair to say that it's, it's uncharted territory, because this is, this is all kind of new, and that's where, that's where I'm a little bit uncomfortable with it, because I, I agree with Shannon's assessment on one city, but you look at other cities and they're different, you know, they don't charge um an a ba, an additional base rate um for A D U's, um, so I, I just want to be quick to rush to this, because it just does the difference, the difference in the multifamily and the eight, in the duplexes, that's what somebody's building, and they have to, you know, provide a meter for each one. Um, this is a unique, kind of new-to-us situation, where, like, all the examples that have been brought, we're allowing A D U's, and if nothing is changing to the infrastructure, it feels like a grab to just, I understand everybody wants to be treated fairly inequally, but this is, it's not a good match for match, in my opinion, um, at all. Because, I mean, I could argue, yeah, like, I, I might not win this one, but I just, I feel uneasy about it, I mean, it just I feel like we need a little bit more data, a little bit more research, it just, it feels excessive.
Legally, is an A D U considered another household?
Yes.
Yeah.
By definition, sorry.
And I, I need to be reminded, what's the base rate again?
Sixty two dollars and eighty one cents.
For water only, then you've got sixty eight dollars and sixty three cents for sewer.
Okay, so that's uh what you were saying, a hundred and thirty or something extra a month that they would pay regardless of whether they're using the water.
Is an increased use of the system.
I agree, but that's where the consumption comes into play, because the meter's in place, and the sewer, you know, rates are designed through the winter months to, to account for that. Um, so I, I would argue that you're still paying the usage of the system, because if you're using over, you're paying for what the meter says every month, and then we're calculating sewer rates on that. So I can make this own argument that it taxes the system, but they're paying for that in the rates.
But just by their use, not by the base, we're all paying a base. Seems like they have the luxury of having two dwellings. And they should pay for that somehow.
I completely agree, and I think I've been pretty transparent, that I feel like there should be a charge. Do I feel like charging a base rate?
Would that be half a base rate?
I, I don't have, I mean, this was, this was brought to us, you know, in this packet, the same time we all got it, um, there was a little conversation before, but that's where I just, my personal feeling is, I'm a little uneasy on that, because I.
But as you're kicking it around right now in your brain, a hundred and thirty is too much, is sixty or seventy five more reasonable, that they should pay for the idea of being able to use our service. And then.
If they're using that building for a a rental. It's then in my eyes, it.
They pass it on.
They're passing it on.
Then most of them will, most of them will have a paying customer.
We have you know, one Ninth Street and one nine A Ninth Street, we have two separate entities, regardless, if it's a son, daughter, mother-in-law, or whatever, you've still got two separate complete living quarters that are using, I mean, using the city services.
And the reason for most of them is going to be for a rental, so they're going to be getting money, and they should just pass this on in their rent.
I wonder if that could be a bigger discussion with the base rate and the, and the usage, but not only for A D U's, but for, for everything. Um, I know that's not in this part of the, the package, but there was a list of the most places that use the most water, and as more, more water you use, less you're paying technically, because the base rate is so high for like a family of four like me. One hundred twenty, when I'm paying like one hundred and eighty per month, most of my bill is base rate.
Yeah.
But if you're a huge business like Carlton Farms, that spends like five percent of our water, their base rate is almost nothing compared to how much water they use. So do we need to have a discussion and like changing either base rate goes smaller and we use more of the rate, or we just go and just using the usage, but I, I feel like that could be a bigger discussion um and through trying to figure out that water issue, because um technically, we are punishing the people that pay the least with the base rate.
It certainly can be. It certainly can be done. It can be requested. Um, you're talking about a rate study. Usually they can take six to nine months to do. Um, and they cost a couple thousand dollars. We are looking at our rates. Um, just within what we've gained in grants, but we're not doing necessarily a comprehensive. Rate study that would be different, looking at what you're talking about, maybe a scaled usage. Um, it would take time. And then in the meantime, you have a lot of A D Us. If those are rented, we're on one meter, they would be grandfathered in. So that is that's the trade off.
So you've got it to where if we did something now, we can always reverse it. After we obtain a whole bunch more information, if we see that it is best to do it.
Yes, it would be much easier to. Undo. Having the full uh second base rate charge for an A D U or A D U.
How long has it been since we've done like a comprehensive? Study like that to to evaluate base rate and charges.
Maybe you know. Uh, probably close to eight years.
Yeah, I was maybe two years on the council, so eight years ago, maybe.
So it seems like it's time.
It could be time. We'll have to find budget or grant for it. They're usually about ten thousand dollars or so. More that was not budgeted for this fiscal year.
Well, I hadn't thought about what you had brought up, Karen May, about, you know, relative, you know, the large users relative to the base rate. Is much lower compared to uh the lower base rate. I mean, the base rate versus the lower usage. There does seem to be an equity there that I haven't considered, so.
Punishing the the small people.
Even the same base rate across all of town businesses or residential.
Businesses don't have a like a range. Residential has zero to five hundred. It's this rate. Five hundred to thousand feet is this rate.
Right, but the base rate is.
Uh, Ashley, do you know what's up here? They have a larger base rate and they also have a larger S T C. It is quite substantial for.
Okay, so the industrial, commercial. Places in town are paying a larger base.
There, I yeah, I don't know what it is off top ahead relative to this base rate, but but they also don't have a range. So they pay at the highest rate for all of their water use. For all their consumption.
And then there's also comment that a higher size meter. Base rate, that's pretty consistent throughout state.
How many sizes of, yeah, this is off topic, but how many sizes of different meters do we have?
Uh. They're, I mean, currently in use or what we can do?
Currently in use.
I think it's like five eights to one inch.
Is this is the common residential size?
Okay.
There's the older ones are a lot of the five eight side. I think currently now public branch is putting it all in about one inch for all new. What are you gonna do, guys?
So just a thought, uh, since the the the. Gosh, um, since the the development plan won't be in place until development code won't be in place until August. Is there a way to adopt this master fee schedule, you know? As presented without. The additional charge for A D U until we could kind of maybe do a little bit more research. That would would that would make me feel comfortable. Um, I understand it's asking staff. I I'd happy to do my own research and present it to you guys too. Um. Or we move on, you guys move on, but that's gonna be a sticking point for me for. An eye vote on this master fee schedule.
Send out on Kevin. We already passed the master fee schedule.
Are we are we not talking? We're talking about the master fee schedule with the A D U charge.
It's an add up, but we already passed the the master fee schedule. This is in addition to it. It's like an amendment.
A clarification.
Gotcha. I was, okay, thank you.
I actually haven't done a real. In-depth check, no.
You just came up with it.
This was kind of on sketch of what we currently already do, so that's why it was proposed. So if you want to have a range of cities, a range of size or specific cities, you want to.
Like, I think better than. Put in what you have without now. We can do some research. If we find our number is too big. But we change it back.
Couple of cities that I've pulled, and it's typically easier to pull bigger cities, um, just because usually more resources. Um, Oregon City, City Sherwood.
Well, that's that's good to know that other cities are doing this base rate. On the E D U or the A D U.
But wouldn't it be?
I guess what's really getting me is. Most of these are being done for commercial. Being they're rented out to people and. I think renters have to be expecting to pay. Some kind of a utility rate.
So we put something like if it's for rental, if it's for commercial, they have to pay. If it's not, it's just. Well, they have to get a license, right? If they get a license for rental, because they're paying you, but if they're if they're not. I don't know if I'm complicated, but if it's just like for family or whatever, then it would make sense to me at least.
They could probably present a hardship case if it is overflow family or, you know, single lady. Ninety years old.
I think that would be more of a hardship case that would be easy write in, right?
Don't have anything in our utility schedule. We offer sources to find ways to help pay pay our bills. Uh, we don't have anything written in our code. When it came by face scenario. I think the only thing we have is for uh those serving in the armed forces. If you are actively serving, you can fill out a form to have your water rates. I think it is cuts off the consumption charge and it's going to be straight while you're actively on.
And it's also something that put your big debt or any study because you need to then way if you're going to be a lawyer.
With these. The A D U thing. Needs to be detached from the main home or can it be a garage they converted?
Yep.
And a complete restroom.
Yep. It can be attached or detached for the new developer. Okay.
I think it makes sense to just follow what we have now and make changes on me. Perhaps have a rate study or have more information, but I think it would make sense. To follow the pattern that we have now. I don't think you should make an exception, although I I understand the reasoning. I, yeah, I I don't like either, but I don't want to be unfair. We're all the city. Um. I I don't I don't like kicking that dickhead down the road, like let's talk about this, whatever. I think. Should make a decision now when we can. Um, yeah, we, I think the rate study would be good for us to to see the information that.
And and the fact that it is, uh, some other cities have done this same application of the base rate, I feel more comfortable. Going along with this for right now. Yeah, sure would, okay.
Adding the base rate.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Doing what staff is recommending be done.
Now, and then look at it after the rate setting.
Yeah, if we get new information on down the road.
We change, reverse.
Okay.
We'll we'll do the rate study at the same time we do the leak detection study.
The leak detection?
The leak detection, that makes sense.
Ten years from now.
Okay, do we have a resolution then? Okay, okay, I move that the council approved and authorized the mayor to sign Resolution Number twenty twenty four dash three five seven. Updating the master fee schedule, revising fees, charges and classification putness for the city of Carlton with the rates included in the adoption of the F. Twenty five budget. Is why, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, is this roll call? Oh. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed?
Hi.
You're, yes, you're opposed, or yes, you're going along.
I am a nay, I'm a no, no.
Okay. The eyes have it, though. Okay, item E, Resolution Number twenty twenty four three five nine Identification Badge Policy.
So Mayor Council, as we move towards our new civic center. Um, we talked about the implementation of. An access control system and that comes with identification badges. About safety and security in our new building, and unfortunately, we've had to think that way, including some of our glass features. Um, just because of the state and age. And so this is a very simple. But standard identification badge. Um, that talks about enhancing building security by controlling access, being able to identify individuals. Easily being able to identify who should be in the building. Um, and facilitating emergency response and deter detering unauthorized. And maintaining records needed.
What's the cost?
Our stuff.
How many badges?
I mean, badges?
Yeah.
Um, they're twenty, but I think I put it in there. If they lose it twice, you get charged a twenty dollar replacement.
So a system that you're. Already paying for includes the badges. Your staff is just recommending if we do or don't actually use that.
So this this says what, when you are in the building, you'll be wanting to wear your badge so that you are identifiable. Uh, that way we can identify visitors in the building, we can identify staff in the building. Um, and it also provides a record of who actually uses the app.
So what what level of the building, I mean, every time somebody walks in the front door, they're gonna get a visitor badge?
If they are going upstairs, likely. So if they're going up to visit the police department, they are likely to get a visitor badge. If they're coming up for a pre-application meeting. And we've got a series of engineers, they will likely get a visitor badge.
So then to get upstairs, you have to go through a locked door.
Just adding security features and but also convenience, for instance, for us, we have a badge. And it's coded in for each of us, you know, when we regularly attend a meeting like council meeting or whatever. So that we have that availability to just let ourselves in without having to go through a whole process to get in. Is there, do you have to um tap something to let yourself out so that? That the system knows when you're in and when you're out? So. When. In the rooms you will be in, you do not, but there are certain areas of the department that it is a swipe in, swipe out.
So the community room, we would need a badge, like if you have one hundred people or something in the community room, you're not gonna have badge.
If you're gonna have a public council meeting, no, you you're not gonna necessarily need your badge.
This is mainly for behind the lock door.
But we're gonna take your picture. We're gonna give you a badge and so.
So it's also for identifying purposes too. This is actually a good idea. I I worked at a UAV place up in. Uh, Thud River, uh, Benjen area for a while, and you had to have a badge to get anywhere on that campus. Um, it was very, very secure. It was reliable. Um, and eight o'clock in the morning when you're when you show up, you know whether your badge works or doesn't. So.
Does, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna clarify, is this, um, I think it's a great idea, do it at my work. I understand it all. Um, I just wanna understand, is the um, the fine and everything, is that borne by the the badge issuer? Or um, the visitor? Um, so if, say, one of the city staff is checking in a visitor to go visit. You know, the city manager upstairs, they issue the badge. If the person walks out the door, drives back to Portland and realizes I still have the black, the badge clipped to me, obviously, they'll hopefully do the right thing and contact the city, but. Is the the fee schedule, is that for the employees of the city that are checking them in, or is that? Is that something that we're gonna try to chase down the visitor and try to charge them a fee? Because I'm assuming that the I T department, you know, once they discover the lost badge, they can, you know, void it. Um, I just wanna make sure I understand is that. Is that a charge borne by the employee that checked them in, or is that? Something we're trying to chase people down for. Obviously, it makes sense if you're renting the facility. Doing that or, you know, using the community room and somebody's issued a key card. I totally understand that. You have that on file. But I'm just kind of imagining a scenario where an architect or an engineer or somebody comes from far away, they're checked in and. Forget the badge, like, is that what it, is that identified in here?
So there are two levels of visitor type badges and. With the policy you are reading specifically applies to employees and elected officials. If you look at the paragraphs. Look closely, um, visitor badges again have two levels. We are going to have one set of visitor badges that will have access control. Availability. Those are for our rental features for our community room. So if somebody's renting a room after hours. They can use that badge in order to get in the community room. Um, or on the weekend. Those we have already applied the fee to if it's not returned. Their second level is cards that do not have the electronic equipment within them, like cards. Um, those are also gonna be pre-printed with a letter B for visitor. Um, but those are probably, those would would be what is issued to our engineers, our architects. That just tell people that they are authorized to be on the second floor visiting Amy. Um, and they are not somebody who is snuck behind somebody in a stairwell or on the elevator and is intending to.
And if they happen to walk out with it.
It's not as expensive. It has an expense, but it's not as expensive. We will not send the P D after them in SWAT.
They take two of them.
Well, then, and the staff person who let them have the badge will not be having to pay for it. Okay.
I make a motion that the uh city council approved and authorized the mayor to sign. Uh, Resolution Number twenty twenty four dash three five nine, adopting the Identification Badge Policy.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, Tourism Promotion, R F P.
Mayor Council. The Tourism Committee uh decided to go up to R F P for social media services. And the last time we initiated social media. We decided to do that based upon. We decided to do that based upon, uh, the growing impact of social media on tourism. And the changing landscape of marketing. Um, through this, also we were losing our city's current provider for social media posting. So we were looking at identifying qualified contractors and we were lucky enough to receive five proposals through this process. The committee actually reviewed five proposals. And decided to interview the two top candidates. One of those candidates filtered even higher to the top, this is an agency that actually. Does their bread and butter on tourism. They also have the benefit of. Being willing to work with the city's website and improve it, provide a landing page. And make sure that information on the website reflects what is being pushed out through social media so that the user has. The same experience. They are also willing to work with a city of our size, they have several cities of our size throughout the Western United States. Um, she quoted one extensively, I think it's in her proposal that's in here, it's Fruta, I believe is the name of the city. And so they understood. That they would need to prove themselves this first year and essentially pay for themselves. They were willing to work with our limited resources. They were willing to work with the tourism committee to get approvals on social media. As well as get content creation, be creative about content creation with a social media influencer. And they were even willing to eat some of the costs in order to get the account. Um, they were also willing to ebb and flow social media posts depending on how budgets work. And when I raised all these points about the need for flexibility, they said, oh yeah, we do this all the time, all of our clients require this. We understand this, we understand this is how the tourism industry works. And we understand we're going to need to have to prove ourselves in order to get more lodging into the shoulder months. Which as you probably saw in the direct communication, uh, strategy that the tourism committee is building. Um, through a lot of wonderful engagement that the members have taken on themselves. In conjunction with C B A to do focus groups with our wineries, our V R B Os, our other businesses throughout town and find out what the needs are. And to develop at least a plan of action for this next year. You will see that the budget that's proposed reflects that initial plan of action. This individual, this company. Is also willing to come and speak to council on a quarterly basis and provide updated reports about numbers that are improving. This is an increase in our budget that we've had. We knew going out to R F P that our budget was not realistic for current pricing of services. This person was willing to work with us where others were not able to work with us. And because of the services she's proposing. Because of what she's offering, because of what she's going to bring cohesively together. I am recommending that we give a year trial. And we expand the budget and we move some things around in the tourism budget. In order to give this a trial period of. Hopefully not to exceed on track of twenty-five thousand.
I, I noticed looking when we're reviewing the budget. That the revenues have come in under the tourist, tourism, no. Motion of the budget is increased quite a bit. Is that right?
No, they've actually decreased a little bit.
Is there a way of measuring? How effective this program is at the end of the year?
Yes, and actually we're going to ask her to do that quarterly. So, and she may not be able to prove the first quarter, this huge jump. But she understands that particularly we're looking in and. Communication plan, we're looking at Christmas in Carlton and those months preceding it as well as a little bit after January, February. To see if we can generate higher numbers with our B R B Os to have people lodge to them. And that is one of the concerns that came out of our lodging industries is that. They weren't necessarily, necessarily seeing the overnight. And so that is. One of the primary goals, the tourism committee is looking at particularly the feedback that they're getting from their focus groups.
Seems like, including their proposal, they're kind of taking the work that's been done to date. With our prior vendor, coming to the next level, really developing more metrics and giving up heads and beds.
Do you, do you foresee any issues with them not being local?
We actually addressed that and she said, we understand that we actually have clients throughout the United States. We're used to doing that, she actually was traveling here. When we were going to interview, we were going to do remote interviews, I got out of our initial analysis and there was an email in my inbox. But I'm going to be in town, could we move face to face, assuming you'd know me, so we arranged the interview face to face. So she's used to traveling and they have an employee civic city. So they're not as unlocal as it initially sounds.
So they could get some photos and stuff like that in events.
What they would do is we would arrange for a photographer, they would illustrate the photo shoot, they would work with us to approve the photo shoot. And then they would come out and they would actually manage that and that's all part of the budget that you see. So it's not Amy and I handholding a photographer around town of, I think she wants a picture of that. It's, they would actually professionally manage that.
I'm assuming that they, they're desiring to get into this niche market here. Carlton being a, a wine. Centric.
She was very interested in Carlton market, she didn't necessarily say because it was wine centric. But she was very involved in Carlton. And out of the two interviewees, I will tell you, when I walked the first one to the door and said. Did you have an opportunity to explore before the interview or will you afterwards? They said, well, maybe. When I had the second interview, I said, I hope you'll be able to explore our town and be able to see more of it before you have to. Continue on your travels, she said, I've been doing nothing else all day.
Why would anyone who wants the business not do that? Oh, maybe.
Do Kevin or to, do Heather and Kim have any?
Only if they're willing to back me up.
Uh, did you, either of you have any comments on this or?
Yeah, well, I wanted to say, I, uh, thank you, Shannon, um, for your, everything that you've said, I am in total agreement with. Um, I wanted to say, you, you know, commend the tourism committee for showing the collaboration and the commitment. To pull together the comms plan that inevitably led to the, uh, R F P. That led us to the amazing vendor and, you know, a number of us on the committee come from a marketing background where we've had to interview people. Um, you know, in the marketing world to do these things and I, I think Sha- Shannon will attest that I definitely asked some. Some hard questions in this interview to make sure that they weren't going to upsell us and continue to ask us for more money in order to do different things. Et cetera, et cetera, and I think I felt, um, the trust and the genuineness in their answers. When, uh, when I don't think they're in the business of working with the city to make a bunch of money, they're interested in working with the city because they want the project. Which, um, I can appreciate. And, you know, this vendor I think is, um, going to strategic, strategically help push our group. To, you know, to advance our marketing efforts and I think we need some advice from the outside council like this group. To help us understand best practices for cities who really want to, uh, gain some visibility, so. I think this is a huge step towards our intent, also to become an official committee, it's kind of proving that we're working together. And, um, that we can be very strategic and that we can make things happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Comments on, uh, I'm Heather Miller, by the way, for those of you that don't know me. I serve on the Carlton Business Association as well as the Tourism Committee, I work for the ground and I have. Six plus years of experience in McBendel and, uh, my experience there. Has focused on collaboration between cities. Destination management funds and business associations and how those things can efficiently work together. And being a part of this group in the last few months has shown. Me a lot of trust in the city, C B A, getting to our businesses and those who. Benefit the most from tourism dollars and understanding what their needs are and I think that's. Just really important to have overall positive outcomes for our community, which are not just. Tourism dollars, but leveraging opportunities, bringing in outside money, and I think this is just one step in that direction of formalizing. That committee. Getting in professionals to do our marketing. And bringing more income to our. To the businesses that are bringing heads into beds, because what we learned is that they're not. They're not full, as much as we want to think they are, they are sitting for six plus months of the year with very little revenue or income. Um. So I think it's important to listen to them and listen to our other businesses who. Only survive if we continue to have outside dollars coming in and then being really responsible with those outside dollars. And a dedicated committee to those efforts is really important.
Thanks, Heather. Okay, any questions, comments? Observations? We don't need a vote on this, it doesn't.
I'll do it, we also wanted to, you want to do it?
I can do it.
Okay.
I move that, uh, city council accept whole Vita as the contractor. To provide city tourism promotion services and authorize the mayor. Execute all necessary documents, including a contract not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. For fiscal year twenty-five.
There's a second? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, ladies.
I do want to say how much the committee has been working well, I know we changed the format of the tourism committee. And just this interview process, as a good example of, we didn't always do the. Forum, and so it was good that we were able to keep forward on that. And so this is working well, I know the term official committee was thrown out a couple of times here. And they are definitely an official advisory committee on tourism.
Great.
They just don't have the corner.
Guess what? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
I just want to say I don't miss COVID and I'm going to do my best to never be on Zoom again, because it's. Um, very difficult to maintain two computers at the same time, so.
Hey, the next time you are, maybe we'll have a better A P system.
There you go.
Okay, here we go, got your pen, candy?